For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick announcement before we start. If anybody's here for the zoning hearing board meeting, it's on the second floor in the jury selection room, the jury meeting room. So if anybody's here for that. We'll have a roll call. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance adopting a 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. We have Mr. Griffith.
That's on now. There you go. Just a brief comment on the budget. First of all, I want to commend the budget team. My deputy was along with Mary and Budget and Finance and the team for getting a budget that's no tax increase for the county again this year. They worked really hard at that zero-based budget. Very, very difficult to attain. A lot of departments had to sacrifice a lot of things to get to the zero-based budget. And that's reflective of the budget you guys are going to be working on for the next couple of weeks ahead. Took a lot of work to get there and commendable efforts by everybody as we look at our neighbors to the north who are getting a 33% tax hike. God bless those folks up there, you know? It's not an easy pill to swallow when you have to do a tax hike of at least that amount. When we were thinking about raising a 5% or 7% here, there was like outrage. So just if we look at things in perspective, they really have a tough budget to handle up there. So kudos to everybody who did the hard work to get this done. And I anticipate the council will work their best to make sure that it gets through without any problems. So thank you so much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Next up, we have Mario Fiorucci. And this is on the budget work session, sir?
No, this is on the residential tax deferral. I put number two, item number two, on my card there.
Okay, no, you have you just you have budget work session check. That's okay. Yeah, we'll have you come back.
I didn't know what to check.
That's okay. That's all right. No worries, sir. We'll get you at the next public comment session.
All right.
Anybody else for public comment on the budget hearing? Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Raabo.
Don't worry, Mr. Chair, I forgive you.
Thank you.
Mark Raabo Hazelton, on the budget. Every year for the past, well, since Home Rule began, you can even ask Councilman Haas, Mr. Chair, I bring up this and Controller Griffith every year about the court reimbursements. And it needs to be addressed. Sixty-seven counties for three consecutive Supreme Court rulings, one it started in 1987, and then again in 1996, and then recently in 2012, that was the most recent Supreme Court ruling, all three of them ruled in the favor of the counties for those court reimbursements. Now, if you go back from just when the 1996 ruling to now, on average, Luzerne County gives approximately $10 million to Harrisburg in reimbursement, you know, to their to their general fund from our courthouse and the magistrates. We're supposed to get, according to the Montemuro Agreement, $2 million Luzerne County's supposed to get. So if you take from 1996, $2 million to now, this county's supposed to be received, or should have received, $36 million to fund the court staff and the magisterial staff. We're not getting that. We've been getting $500,000 since 1996, and that's wrong. So I see it as our county, along with the 66 other counties, should get their 15% that they were owed since 1996. And if need be, I think this county, along with the other 66 counties with C cap, and I spoke to Director Schaefer a few years back, and I have the email backing it up, saying that if the counties want to pursue it, they can, and I think they should file an appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court because this needs to be dealt with. And under the unified judicial system, under our the state constitution, we're supposed to be getting the $36 million. So I hope, Mr. Chair, that the Legislative Committee, yourself, Manager Crocamo, would address this because this is untenable. And by the way, as you well know, Manager Crocamo knows, and even the District Attorney and the judicial staff and the court administrator knows, we're supposed to be getting another judge, vacancy, that is. So how is this county going to fund another staff for another judge? That's going to be a tax increase right there. So and also as far as the infrastructure, I think that there needs to be a work with the authorities, like the redevelopment Authority, Industrial Development Authority, and so on. But that's all, Mr. Chair. I hope that this can be accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raabo. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. It's 5:58. We'll restart at 6:01. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
All right, everybody, it's 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the voting session to order. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We have one proclamation for the NAACP. All right. Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP has been a beacon of hope and champion for civil rights, advocating for justice, equality, and the fair treatment of all individuals. And whereas the Wilkes-Barre NAACP has tirelessly served the community addressing critical issues related to social justice, education, and economic empowerment for its residents. And whereas, in recognition of the growing need to represent and serve the diverse population of Luzerne County as a whole, the Wilkes-Barre NAACP has made the significant decision to officially become the Luzerne County NAACP. And this transition reflects a commitment to inclusivity, ensuring that the voices of all residents across Luzerne County are heard and represented regardless of race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, or background. And whereas Luzerne County NAACP will strive to engage a broader community fostering collaboration and unity among various groups to address systemic inequalities and promote social justice for all. And whereas, this transformation signifies a new era of advocacy where the Luzerne County NAACP will work diligently to create a more equitable environment for every resident, empowering them to participate actively in the democratic process and community initiatives. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim this day, October 12th, as a celebration of the official transition from Wilkes-Barre NAACP to the Luzerne County NAACP, we encourage all residents of Luzerne County to support this vital organization and its mission to promote equality, justice, and community engagement. Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Stevenson, did you want to speak on this? I know you presented the proclamation at a recent event that they had speaking on this.
Yes. This past, I think it was about last weekend, the NAACP had their annual Freedom Fund. Patty Krishnowski was in attendance, and several other folks were there. Shout out to Neil O'Donnell. Thank you for being present, and a lot of other community folks who decided to pop up for their very first time. So we are proud that now Luzerne County will be representing, well, NAACP will be representing Luzerne County across the board. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you very much. What else do we have? Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda?
I make a motion to remove number two from the agenda?
Number two?
Second.
Okay. Yep, number two is the motion to adopt the resolution providing for temporary exemption from real property taxation. I'm not going to read the whole thing for deteriorated blighted properties in the city of Hazelton, Luzerne County, and further defined approximately 90 acres known as the Allen Ridge Community. There's a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The opportunity to vote against it. So I don't know if we keep it on the agenda. I vote nay.
Okay. All right. 10 yes, 1 no. All right. Number two is removed. Any other deletions?
I move that we delete item number one, the motion to adopt the resolution regarding Woodbridge Healthcare.
I second.
All right, there's a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Okay, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
You have three noes and eight eses. It's removed.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify on that, the reason why this was removed is because it's been determined that Luzerne County does not need to make any authorizations regarding this. If any council members would like to comment at that at the appropriate time, you know, we can certainly speak on that. I know that there were some opinions in the room about the project itself. Okay, any other deletions? Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted minus agenda item number one, two. We'll now open up to comment on agenda items only. Mr. Fiorucci, we're going to have you come up at the end, if that's okay? Just because, yeah, since it's not agenda now. I apologize. Okay. All right, good. There you go. That's why we pay him the big bucks. All right. Mr. Raabo? Oh, hold on one second, Mr. Raabo.
Testing. Okay.
You're good.
Mark Raabo Hazelton, regarding agenda item number seven, I hope that this whole thing will be put to arrest, at least for this upcoming election, because as I sent you all that email, it is on the books, protections for election officers, staff. And I hope when the District Attorney gets here, he can edify that there is, that his office is working with the Governor Shapiro's Task Force on election safety and security. So I think this should be put to arrest, and we should move forward to try to ensure that the election goes off safely, smoothly, without any calamities or contentions. God willing. Okay. And as number nine, the ABC bylaws, Mr. Chairman, I know you and the Vice Chair serve on the ABC Committee. I was inquiring as far as with the template goes, was this sent to the, I know the ABC solicitors would need to get a copy of this because, you know, I asked this as a board member, an individual board member, that, you know, if they received a copy of this template, number one, and number two, with regards to authorities, I hope that the county solicitor would work with the authority solicitors because, as you know, there's significant case law rulings that say that authorities, once they are formed, are considered, quote, "agencies of the state." So that might be in conflict with certain charter amendments, as I specified at the Government Study Commission when I attended. So I hope that can be all worked out before that this could be, you know, ratified. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raabo. Attorney Skeen, do you want to just clarify? I know that your office did speak to all of the ABCs, or at least they attempted to reach out, correct?
They, we attempted to reach out to all the ABCs. Also, what we were seeking to do is have the ABC Committee listen to the changes that we made. We wanted to have one unified bylaw pattern because we have a lot of boards and commissions now that have no, they're not meeting, or they don't have bylaws. So we wanted to get that done so that we could have a template, and then have it approved after they get to make some minor changes to it. So we did not ship that out to all, some authorities might, most boards do not have solicitors. So we will send that out after it passes here.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Skeen. Mr. Thornton, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. About two weeks ago, the ABC Committee met here. This is Mr. Perry, myself, Ms. Stevenson, and who's the fourth? Greg? No. John.
It's okay. I was I was virtual at that meeting. I'll forgive you.
Oh, that's why. Seeing is believing. So the Office of Law had worked on this project for some time, and Shayna Messinger was our new Assistant Solicitor, and she came up with a great template, and we discussed that link that day. That was a long meeting here, and it was a public meeting. And we actually suggested amendments, which we discussed, and then voted on each amendment. And we had 10 amendments, I think, at the end. And then we voted on the whole body of work. So a lot of work went into this by the Office of Law. They did reach out to the authorities, boards, and commissions ahead of time to discuss with them. Now, we also left, this is a general template. We left it up to each board and commission and authority to, if they want to alter or make some changes, they can, but they have to run it by the ABC Committee. And then ultimately, we would run it by council. So that's why we put it on here tonight. So we're just trying to get standardized things out there, not restrictive, but standardized. You know, if we say they must meet four times a year, every quarter, and they only meet once a year, or they never meet, you know, that's going to be a problem. So that's all we're trying to accomplish here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. That's one other thing. When I was the Chair of the ABC Committee too, we really wanted to get this done, and just make sure that the ABCs were actually following the rules, which some of them include speaking to the ABC Committee about changing their bylaws when they did so. And many of them didn't do that. So they'd come to us and request things like an increase of board members or things like that. And we wouldn't even have an idea of how many people were on that board until they would come to us with a request. And that is just not a way for them to operate or for us to operate. So I think this was a great idea, and I'm really happy the Office of Law put a lot of work into it, and Mr. Thornton spearheaded it. So thank you very much on that.
Yeah, I'd also like to recognize Sharon for her assistance with that as well. It was a very constructive meeting. The bylaws are meant to be adaptable to each of these committees. So there is room for adjustment as long as they're able to check back with us. And I think that flexibility allows us to have way more efficiency than we've had in the past. So thank you, Karen. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One last comment on this. When I was Chair of the ABCs way back, this is a long time coming. This is necessary to have this because we never had a handle on everything that was going on in all of the ABCs. We had a rough time getting the right names on our website. So this is a long time coming. Kudos to Mr. Thornton and Office of Law for getting it done.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up for public comment, we have David Fatula. I'm sorry if I said that name wrong. Can you? Oh, they were on item two? Okay, we'll have you at the end then, sir. Okay. Did I say your name right? Fatula? Okay, just making sure. I don't want to say anybody's name wrong. Got yelled at at the last meeting for that. All right. I did. All right. Is that for, Mr. Griffith we have?
Item number two I was going to talk about, but it's not on the agenda. You took it off the agenda. And it's a little bit disturbing that we took that off the agenda. It doesn't give the council an opportunity to speak on that. And I know the developer was actually looking for direction on that at the last work session. And so it leaves it up in the air for the developer. I think it should have stayed on the agenda, and you should have voted on it to give a clear message to the developer where council stands. They may have to wait another two weeks. It would certainly give them some direction. Putting, taking things off the agenda just prolongs the agony. I want to talk about number seven on the resolution about the importance of election safety. Election safety is really important. The issue that I'm having is about this drop box issue. We all need to understand drop boxes are not legal in this state. They are not. Contrary to what people think, they are not. They're convenient. They're put in by the board. I think the board should be responsible, either personally or otherwise, for anything that happens with those drop boxes because it shouldn't be the county taxpayers on the hook for that. So I think that resolution's appropriate. I do think that the drop boxes are not appropriate only because they're not legal. Maybe you ought to put some language in the resolution and make the General Assembly accountable for that. The other issue that I have is on the motion approved by law template. I didn't get a chance to look at them. Kudos to the team for doing that. I hope we put strong language in there that said they must follow Roberts' rules, and they also must follow the Sunshine Act. Because as we saw from the last Bureau of Elections meeting, we're trying to stifle the public by telling people who don't live in this county that they can't speak at a public meeting. So that's something that probably should be in the bylaws for all ABCs, that they cannot do that. As a rogue board, they can't silence the people of this county. And lastly, my other point is the, let's see, I talked about the drop boxes. Oh, this council has a bylaws that they must follow. It says we have committees. Instead of being committees as a whole, to Mr. Haas's point about this resolution, that should have went to the Legislative Committee and been discussed and brought to this county as a committee recommendation, as the same as Ms. Smith's ordinance as well. That should have been brought to the Legislative Committee. That way, the meetings don't go on forever. That's why the committees were formed. We have a Legislative Committee. We have an Administrative Code Committee. These committees are required by your bylaws to meet quarterly. I have yet to see the Administrative Code Committee meet yet in two to three years. Years, not months, years. That's a very important committee. They need to meet. This council needs to do better on having your committees meet to give the council better direction. It's a part-time council. So it's really important that the committees meet to help move that along. So I think my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items only? Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. I just want to follow up with Mr. Griffith as far as putting in the bylaws about the Sunshine Act and everything because when you don't allow people from outside the county to come and speak, as a citizen, sometimes we, I mean, we communicate with people across the state. And sometimes, just like if the council needs to bring an expert in from outside the county for a certain reason, you're able to do that. And they're allowed to come in this room, and they're allowed to speak. Well, sometimes the citizens need to do the same. So that's another reason to have that in there. That's really all I wanted. That's one of the things, seems like every time I'm up here, we're arguing about letting people speak. And I'd like to talk about it when we're not arguing about it because, so you understand that sometimes there's people that can contribute from outside the county that could be helpful. And that's why I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? There's a hand up. Claudia Glennon?
Claudia Glennon, Salem Township. I'm speaking on agenda item seven. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to say that I don't think that it's necessary. The proposal has no impact, and frankly, I find it extremely hypocritical, given that on October 8th, you voted down a nonpartisan inclusive ordinance, which would have actually provided protection and recourse to our election workers beyond what is, beyond the individuals that are currently covered. And bringing up drop boxes again at this time, at this point in our election, I think is totally unnecessary and only creates more fear, doubt, discord, disruption, and provides an opportunity for for attacks and possible destruction of the boxes, which are not being threatened by the individuals that support a pro-voter agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Grantied.
Joe Grantied, Plains Township. That last conversation triggered something that I wanted to ask. The security of the election workers. How many election workers do we have in the county? I don't know if anybody wants to answer the question, but, and I'd like to know what the makeup is party-wise.
Do you want to finish your comment, and then we can answer your question? Although we
That's pretty much.
You may want to specify. Do you want to include poll workers?
Poll workers.
Judges of elections. I mean, that's going to turn into a
Well, not poll workers, just in the Election Bureau itself.
Manager Crocamo, do you know the specific answer?
We bring in other staff members as we get closer to the election from other departments. To answer your question, we don't ask their party affiliation.
They should.
No, that's illegal.
It should be
It's illegal, sir.
It should be evenly
It's illegal.
Representation.
It's illegal.
All right, Mr. Grantied, you have any other comments?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, I have two for, that were emailed to us. Okay. This one is from Denise Williams regarding the election safety resolution on county council agenda that discourages the use of ballot drop boxes citing so-called safety and security concerns. This is not the first time that Republicans on county council have proposed resolutions/ordinances discouraging the use of ballot drop boxes. In June 2022, the 11-1 Republican Majority Council passed a resolution to ask the state legislature to ban mail-in voting and ballot drop boxes. All Republicans on council voted for it. The one Democrat on council didn't. In July of 2022, Steve Urban proposed an ordinance to not allow the administration to deploy ballot drop boxes. It failed by a 5-6 vote. Should it have passed, it would have meant further chaos for voters and litigation fees for all taxpayers in the county. This current resolution's timing and allowance of being placed on the agenda two weeks away from a presidential election is very poor and irresponsible decision on the part of Chair Lombardo. Councilman Thornton's resolution that sows discord and distrust with drop boxes so close to an election is not prudent. This council needs to do better. Denise Williams, Kingston Township. Next up, we have a public comment from Robin and Walter Cochan of Dallas Township regarding agenda item number seven. This resolution refers to the proper operation of a responsible government, yet that is not what we have received in Luzerne County. Many of the citizens attending council and election board meetings have been doing so since the botched election of 2020 and subsequent lack of transparency and responsiveness to citizens in the county. Luzerne County has had four years to get our elections right, but instead of hiring qualified employees and best But instead of hiring qualified employees, investing in standardized training, and putting proper measures in place for the most basic functions of successful elections, the county has wasted time creating redundant ordinances and on unsecure voting drop boxes. A monumental election will take place in two weeks, yet Luzerne County's chaotic confusion is already creating disenfranchisement for thousands of voters. This resolution states the public must maintain confidence in the integrity and transparency of the election process. Yet none of these qualities currently exist for the county to be able to maintain it. The county's actions do not match what this resolution declares. We are tired of flimsy excuses and shallow actions. When will Luzerne County actually be responsive to the voters by providing free and fair elections as we had several years ago? Sincerely, Walter and Robin, or Robin and Walter Kochan from Dallas Township. All right. Hearing no more public comment, we will move on to the adoption, the approval of the minutes from the October 8th meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No. Okay.
No. I think there's an issue.
Okay. Would you like to state your issue?
Would you mind?
If we can amend it, if possible.
I believe we're missing speakers who spoke at the public session. Specifically, I think we're missing Cindy Malcomus. And the other two that came to mind were Beth Gilbert and Mike Susak because they're both election workers. So I just don't think that's a full list. And I think it
This is on the public hearing?
Yes, the public comment.
The public hearing or the public comment from the actual meeting?
No, the public comment on Agenda Items.
Okay. Would you like to amend it to?
I listened to the tape. Are you sure you're not thinking of them in the work session?
I know that, I know that Mike Susak spoke at the, at the public comment on Agenda Items. And Beth Gilbert, too. It's possible I'm wrong about Cindy Malcomus.
Ms. Lawrence, I do remember them speaking, but I'm not sure when they spoke. We can always just table this until the next meeting.
Okay.
If that's okay. I mean, we can still have this on the website, just it won't be approved by council.
Okay.
And we'll look to edit it before the next meeting, if that's all right. Is everybody okay with that? Motion to table? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes approval is tabled until the next meeting. All right. Next up, we'll move on to our Agenda Items. New Number One, motion to adopt the resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number Two, introduction of ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for drug and alcohol. Manager Krokomo?
Yes, I'm introducing the ordinance to amend the 2024 2024 budget and recommend that it pass to amend, add the Luzerne County opioid settlement funds that the Drug and Alcohol Department was awarded from Luzerne County Council. So it can account for the amount to be expended for the warm handoff certified recovery specialist services, which totals $72,000. And the amount, the amount plans to expend in 2024 for the expanded prevention education services totaling $72,000.
Any questions for Manager Krokomo? All right, thank you very much. Next up, Number Three, introduction of the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County Government Study Commission. Manager Krokomo?
I'm introducing the ordinance to amend the 2024 budget to include the budget for the general, the Government Study Commission.
All right. Manager Krokomo, I just have one question on that. Do you think that in the future it might be more prudent for council to be introducing that ordinance? Since we're the ones that authorized the study commission to be on the ballot? Or do you think it's just easier if you do it? Does it really matter, do you think? Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's, it probably is more streamlined if I enter it.
Okay.
Rather than have council enter it and then have to have four votes. We still have to have a public hearing and ultimately a vote.
Okay. All right. It was just a question that came to mind as we were reading through. Thank you. Okay. Number Four, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Wyoming Area Regional Police Department?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number Five, motion to adopt the resolution recognizing the importance and necessity of election safety.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
You know, I wish, could I just ask a question of this one, Mr. Chair? I'm sorry.
Uh, we
Is it too late now that we've begun the
We already started voting.
Because my question is, what, what Ms. Williams said in her comments, did this council approve the same language back in 2021?
Twenty-two.
2022? So this, has this council already put forth that?
No.
Well, it wouldn't have been this council either way.
Prior council.
Yeah.
But county council.
Different language, different language.
Okay. Different, but it say the same thing?
No, this language is only, we discourage the use.
This wasn't, this was not for, this, that resolution that she's speaking about from 2022 was, I believe it was a letter that was sent to the state legislature advocating to return to pre-COVID voting rules.
Yes.
Or pre-ACT 77 voting rules.
So to get rid of the drop boxes.
That was part of it.
Okay. Which I fully support getting rid of them. I think they're opening us up to fraud and other things, so. And aside from other potentially harmful acts, so. I believe in that, but I'm going to vote no on this. I think it should have gone through a work session. And I really think that the legislature needs to act. And since this council's already done that, I fully, highly support that.
Okay.
So no. Sorry for evicting the editorial.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Okay, thank you. Number Six, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement of sale, et cetera, for a parcel of county-owned property located in the city of Pittston to the City of Pittston Redevelopment Authority?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number Seven, motion to approve the ABC bylaws template.
So moved.
Motion is second. Roll call?
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. First, we have Mr. Fiorucci. Sorry for making you wait so long.
Thank you again.
Actually, it wasn't that long, but
Yeah, Mario Fiorucci, Sugar Notch. I sent an email about this issue and some newspaper clips to everyone. I don't know if you saw them or not, but I'll do a brief show and tell to Sunday's Times Leader, Tax Break for Housing Development Before Luzerne County Council. And how it relates to my subject or issue is the April edition of the Citizens Voice. And this article was also in the Citizens Voice today about the Hazelton development. Details proposed 95-unit housing development in Sugar Notch, which is really 155 because they didn't count 60 of those parcels as double-block townhouses. Now, the impact something like this would have. And I didn't know about the residential abatement. And I've been going to the meetings in Sugar Notch and no one brought it up, not the developer, not anyone on council, the solicitor. So I'm worried about how this may impact Sugar Notch, of course. But how it may impact the county, first of all, if abatement for the full amount of taxes due is granted. You're talking about 137.6 million in new assessment, assessment value property for the county. Of course, there's no school or income tax involved. That translates in today's dollars as 825,000 for the county, for its budget. But with inflation, cost overruns, you know, healthy housing market when this is done five to 10 years, you're probably talking a million dollars that the county's given up for more or less 10 years. You know, once it's, you can't tax somebody before it's built and everything. I know that. But I'm just saying, you know, in general. Now, in Sugar Notch, on a scale of about a quarter to what the Hazelton property is, we're looking at obtaining about 189,000 in annual property tax revenue or new assessed value. Plus, we get an extra 61,000 for the half percent of income tax once residents fill it up. And of course, that's today's dollars. That's not taking account tax increases, which may also pertain to the county, the cost of inflation factored in, the housing market. So maybe instead of 235,000 for Sugar Notch, it could be 300,000 in five to 10 years when it's all done and filled up. So I just want to recognize that the impact of this abatement can be crippling and also cause more tax increases. Not only, first of all, in Sugar Notch, I'm positive it will, probably for the county, too. Because it sounds like there's some tight items in the budget, though I haven't been coming to meetings or doing anything since the, you know, County Council was formed and, you know, back in, I guess, 2012. But I used to come quite a bit then, so it's nice to see everybody's working well and doing well with this new, you know, format for the county.
Thank you.
Unless somebody has a question for me?
Thank you, Mr. Fiorucci.
Go ahead.
Oh, sir, this isn't really like a, this isn't, this isn't really a question and answer, Perry, from the public, but
Okay, for anybody on the council, anybody on the council, I mean. Anybody have a question about the impact this may cause? Or am I overstating it? Or do you think I'm understating?
If we have any questions, we can certainly send you an email or something.
Well, I would investigate the impact. That's all I would say in closing.
Okay.
Before you vote on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Tom Potsco?
Tom Potsco from Hanover Township, council members, council chair, council solicitor. I have several questions. The council majority right now is Republican, is it not?
This isn't really a question. This is public comment time, not, not for a back-and-forth question. But if you have more comments, we'd be happy to maybe answer
I'll make it a statement.
Okay.
Okay. The current council has a Republican majority. The previous council had a supermajority. Our election board has a Democratic majority. Does this council, no. I don't know if, that just doesn't sound right to me. You've had a supermajority and the decisions by the Board of Elections have been overruled. You have been overruled by the Board of Elections on the drop box issue. I don't think that's right. But on to the 119th District. They sent out mail ballots with the 119th District representative race with the name misspelled. They have sent out further corrected mail ballots. I know for a fact two people have received ballots and have not, that were not requested. There's a problem with the election board. Misspelling is, how can it not be checked? The back and forth of those ballots could cause conflicts in the counting of the ballots. And as far as drop boxes are considered, no one's mentioned that 47 counties in Pennsylvania do not have drop boxes. 20 do. Does this mean 47 counties in Pennsylvania are suppressing the vote? Or does it mean they're confident that they are not needed? Or, and/or considered a threat to election integrity? That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Potsco. Mr. Fatula?
Hi, Dave Fatula, 105 Mark Road, Hazelton. So my property is a stone's throw from where they want to develop this, these properties. And, you know, I want to speak on, I think, I don't know how it got this far. If you look at the act in which the land would qualify under, I'm just going to give you a quick excerpt of what it states. The act shall be construed as authorizing local tax authorities exemptions to construct new and deteriorated areas of communities and improvements. Deteriorated areas, deteriorated areas, blighted properties, blighted properties to, uh, let's see, to be deemed endangered to the public health, safety, welfare, and public nuisance. There's quotations under dwellings, you know, fire hazards, vacant or unimproved lots, or a parcel of ground in a predominantly developed neighborhood that has become a place for accumulation of trash, debris, or is a haven for rodents and vermin. So I think everyone on council has one of these properties in their community. Somewhere where you say, boy, I wish somebody would develop that, maybe knock it down, put something else there. You know, vacant land, somebody you're always after, just try to keep up. The land which they want to build these properties, these houses on, is virgin woodlands. This is not dilapidated. It's not blighted, right? I don't know how this, and I've asked the Attorney Generals to look at it and they just sort of ignored me. I don't know how it qualifies, how the city qualified this land and two other parcels, which just so happen to be owned by certain people that are also woodlands. Only those three properties have been determined to be blighted, you know, overrun, a fire, you know, that type of stuff. It is not, the spirit of the act was to encourage developers to develop in, maybe your downtown where, you know, a building burnt down and now there's a vacant lot, or something along those lines. Not for virgin woodlands. And I would think that the can of worms that this would open for the county, there's a lot of woodlands out there. And for developers, just say Sand Springs that wants to put up a townhouse, I'd be knocking on your door looking for a tax abatement like, like Hazelton. So again, I don't know how, how we got here, or how they're getting away with using the act in this manner. But it was not the spirit of the act to take, you know, the homes of the deer and the squirrel and put townhouses on and get your tax abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Potsco. Is there a Mike Potsco? Is he out in the, all right, he'll come in. Okay.
Hello, Mike Potsco, Hanover Township. I just wanted to bring something to everybody's attention here. Council, I've been a poll worker since 2022. The paper gate, the most egregious form of voter disenfranchisement I've ever seen. And I decided to do my civic duty and try to help out and see what's going on with these elections. With this one coming up, it's going to be really busy, so I decided to vote on demand. I went in on October 11th. And there was people that called out, so I was waiting there for a good amount of time. One of the men that were with me waiting told me he had the app from the postal service that shows a picture of the mail. He had gotten notice that his mail-in ballot was delivered. It was not in the picture. So he decided he had to come down and vote on demand. Another man was leaving the area, wouldn't be in town for the election, also had not received his mail-in ballot. Now, these, both of these men tried to get their ballot and applied in September. So I finally got to the, to the desk and they gave me this. It's a, it's a mail-in ballot. I don't understand why I would be given a mail-in ballot to vote in person at Penn Place. I don't know if it's to increase the number of people that use mail-in ballots or the drop boxes, or if it's a way to save money. Either way, it didn't make much sense to me. So later on, I went and I checked to see what the, the status was, and I had learned that it was canceled. Not sure how it could be damaged or misplaced if I had literally taken it from the Penn Place second floor into the drop box, Place second floor into the Dropbox, but it had. Turns out that it was, I believe, because I was in the 119th District. In 10 days, I received this. It's my second mail-in ballot. Now, I know that the mail-in ballot that I first filled out did not have a misspelling of Rin Cabbage's name. So now I have a second mail-in ballot, and I'm going to take it in and put it in because the first one is canceled. Is it gonna, is that gonna produce duplicate ballots for myself? I understand that it shouldn't, but this really calls into question voter integrity and disenfranchisement all around this county. I think it's a, it's a real problem. I believe that if this, if the man that's leaving the area was in the 119th District, he won't get his second mail-in ballot. And if it gets canceled, does his vote count? I just don't understand why this continues to happen in this county. This isn't a Republican-Democrat kind of thing, it's every citizen in this county is dealing with this, and I think we need to look at getting rid of these and promoting responsibility rather than, in my mind, laziness.
Thank you, Mr. Potsco.
Thank you.
Andrew Crocomo, do you want to address that at all?
Sure, first of all, I'll go back to the beginning of your statement. That ballot that's produced on demand is what's required by the state. We don't develop that, we don't have any input on how that process came to be, or what the process is. So we're doing what the state is requiring us to do, so that's why you received the ballot that you received. The incorrect spelling of the candidate's name in the 119th District was as a result of our vendor Dominion. They admitted that it was their error and that our election bureau did everything that we were supposed to do. The day that it was revealed that there was a spelling error, both the Department of State recommended and the candidate had issued, and the law requires that we cancel those original ballots. What happens is those canceled ballots go through our machine, that's the Gillis machine, and we will segregate, we will separate out those ballots. We'll be able to do that, and we put them in a separate box, literally a separate box, where we keep our ballots. Duplicate ballots went out, a second ballot went out that had, what I'm going to call a sticker, and it's on your ballot that you're showing, is the second ballot. If a person fills out that second ballot, we will use that second ballot as the voters vote. If they don't, those segregated original ballots will be reviewed by the election board. That's why we're segregating them. So there's no way that you can vote twice because there's a voter ID that's attached to every single voter and every single ballot that goes to a voter.
I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot, so this wasn't mailed out.
The one that you have in your hand?
This wasn't mailed out.
You're right, you got it at the bureau.
So it wasn't wrong. So why did I get a second one? Why was taxpayer money used to send me a second ballot for no reason?
Because you're on a list that received, that you receive mail-in ballots.
I specified with Emily that I wasn't to be put on that list because I don't want mail-in ballots. I did not check the box to be on there annually, I did not put myself on any list to get mail-in ballots.
We don't, we don't put people on mail-in ballots that don't ask for it.
Okay.
Jennifer?
You went on to that list when you went in to fill out the on-demand mail-in ballot? You were requesting a mail-in ballot?
I was on demand. I did, there's a checkbox.
Mr. Potsco, I think that there's a misnomer here, that it's, I'm sure Ms. McCorr is going to explain this, that there is no early voting in Pennsylvania, technically.
As soon as, as soon as that application was processed, you became a mail-in voter, and because those, those events happen to go close together, you went on that list and prompted you to get another ballot in the mail. Because it's an application to be an online, a mail-in voter.
I voted on October 11th, it was fixed on October 11th, so I shouldn't have been put on that list.
That was the dates, that was the dates when everything happened, so as soon as that went in, it initiated the second ballot.
And it shouldn't have, is what I'm-
But when it goes through the machine, it will scan those barcodes and they will be separated and reviewed. There's a mechanism-
All right, what, okay. Mr. Wolovich?
Yeah, real quick, we're milled it. So if a person votes on demand, that ballot cancels out all the other ballots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, mine got canceled.
Mr. Potsco?
Yeah, so now this is not an on-demand, this is a mail-in.
Okay, Mr. Sabatino, do you have a question? Okay, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, first, Mr. Potsco, thanks for coming, thanks for being very appropriate, because I know it's very frustrating, I can see on your face, but you're being very appropriate, and I thank you for that. At long last, how much longer are we going to have to endure this, Mr. Chair, and the whole public? The whole, the eyes of the whole country are on us, on this whole mail-in ballot, I'm not saying Loser County, our election staff workers are doing a great job. We have a total vacuum of state policy that has been handed down to us by the courts that have run amok. It's causing unnecessary problems time and time and time and time and time again. I have dozens of emails from dozens of different, a few different elections. This nonsense must stop. The drop boxes need to go, the mail-in ballots need to go. This, we don't govern by proxy, we don't govern from home, we come here together. We should vote where we've always done it. We are causing total discord in our public, and I've just had it, I'm so, I'm getting very agitated because this happens every meeting. Thank God we don't have 50 people like last time, doing it on both sides. The legislature's not acting, they need to act. The governor of Pennsylvania committed voter fraud, his wife mailed his mail-in ballot, but governor of Pennsylvania, but he's out gallivanting. I voted in 2020, I put my votes in the Dropbox, I wasn't going to be present on Election Day. I saw some man stuff four or five ballots, I don't know how many. I told my dad, I said, I think he just committed voter fraud. When is enough enough? Really, I'm so sorry, you staff, you are doing the best you can, and the staff, there's no reflection on Emily Cook or anybody down there. We got a previous election director who lost paper and decides now she can have the liberty to comment on how we're going to run elections? This is like Saul Alinsky tactics. It's like blow up the system and then call the system into question. This is so absurd, I tell you, I get calls all the time about this. Now, I like Mr. Thorin's, what he brought, but we should have voted on that last, we should have voted the amendment that I put in there, all right? I don't know, I'm just channeling what I'm feeling, the vibe out there. So, sir, thank you for coming, I'm going to try to be as proper as I can and just shut my mouth, because I've had it, this is, we're going to have some real problems here, and we're going to be in the news, and it's no fault of our own. Shame on Harrisburg, shame on all you fools down there. Do your jobs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Seriously.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Potsco, you have any, okay. All right, if you have any, if you have any other questions, Mr. Potsco, we'd be happy to help you out after the meeting is over, okay? All right, sir, you already, did you already speak during? Sir, you already spoke during this public comment session?
...before I came here tonight, the Pennsylvania voting system, and it says annual mail ballot, it was not checked, the block that was below it was checked, the block below says you did get a mailbox, but it was not marked as annual receiving mail ballot.
Okay.
If you can look it up right now, if you'd like, I can give you the information.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Potsco, we'll address, we'll, can we speak to you after the meeting, please? All right. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to dovetail off of what was said about the drop boxes, and it was said in the previous meeting two weeks ago, and I have to speak my mind on this, that a few people during public comment brought out all the states that have drop boxes that are taking mail-in ballots in their drop boxes. The funny thing is, they failed to mention one significant detail, and that is, those states have those ballot drop boxes legally authorized and codified in their state election laws. Let me say it again, they are codified in their state election laws. So therefore, and even California, you know, not a very, not a very right-wing state, they have it codified to the point where it's specified down to the chain of custody, security, Dropbox dimensions, everything. And you know why they did that? Because their, the county's insurance providers in those California counties wouldn't be on the hook. So as to what Mr. Haas just said about shame on Harrisburg, I completely agree, because if it wasn't for the ruling by certain state Supreme Court justices who wanted to score political points during COVID, this mess wouldn't be, keep reoccurring year after year, because they left it to the counties to determine the number of drop boxes. Like I said in public comment, out of all the counties in Northeast PA, Lackawanna and Luzerne have multiple drop boxes. The other counties don't have any drop boxes. So tell me how that's uniform under Article 7, Section 6 of the state constitution, where all election and registration laws are uniform throughout the Commonwealth. Tell me how that jives with that Supreme Court ruling from 2020. It doesn't. So I agree with Councilman Haas on that. Moving on to the Hazelton property, I agree with what Mr. Fatula said, because as you know, Mr. Chair, that blighted properties must be certified as blighted. If you check, if you have Manager Crocomo or Mr. Skeen, check it out, that property was not certified as blighted, as Mr. Fatula said, they're virgin woodlands. And also, if you bring in all those properties, and as it was stated in work session two weeks ago, the affordability, how does that work? Because no one's going to be able to afford it, so what happens? It's going to be given out either as low-income housing, or they, those properties are going to become blighted themselves, and it's going to be drawing on the utilities, like the water, because the watershed land, once you cut that down, those woods down, guess what happens? Those animals start going into residential areas and then it needs vector control. Is the county going to provide that?
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Griffith?
I have an open invitation for all 11 council members. Pick a day during the week to come and sit with me at the desk where I take people that are on-demand voting. Just pick a day, pick an hour. Just take the time to sit there with me for one hour and deal with the people that come in and are so confused by what the state legislature has done to our voting process that is horrendous. The cost that they have cost this county, and the manipulation, and all of the stuff that's going on in this county by the state, not by us. Do we need more staff? Absolutely. Do we need more help? Absolutely. But the ability for the state to mandate these rules on the county and make us do mail-in ballots twice, basically, 400, well, we had 40,000 ballots, we sent 40,000 ballots out, we have 40,000 people come in for on-demand voting, how is that productive? It's not. Please, take an hour, come sit with me, because it's very frustrating. The people are very confused and very upset and very confused, and very upset, all over the place, on top of all the other things that are going on in this county. So I don't, I don't expect somebody to come to this podium, a citizen, and be calm about his ballot. Voting is important to everybody, and unfortunately, the state legislature hasn't taken it that way, so we need to fix that. I encourage the Board of Elections to stop pointing fingers at people and get in a car and drive to Harrisburg, and sit down in the Pennsylvania Department of State's office and explain to them the frustration. That's what the board should be doing, instead of writing letters to this council about things that are going on that have absolutely nothing to do with that. This is ridiculous. The Board of Elections sits from on high, as I said in my email, they make directives to everybody, and everybody has to jump through hoops. We have to pay money, we have to provide security, we have to take care of the voter, and the board just sits back and goes, oh, there's no seal on that box up in Hazelton. Well, if you were there, why didn't you pick up the ballots and bring them down for us? Oh, that would be helpful. We can't do that. We need to start working together to make elections better. The board needs to use their power as the Board of Elections, instead of filing lawsuits against the county, use your powers as a Board of Elections to go down and sit down in the Pennsylvania Department of State's office with the Director of Elections and tell him what's wrong with this process. But we don't do that, because that would be the right thing to do. What we'll do is we'll come here and inflame the public, so they can come and dump on the council, dump on the manager, dump on the workers of the bureau, and get nothing done except cause more inflammation, more toxic environment, more voter distrust, more voter integrity issues, all of those things that just jeopardizes our democracy at every turn. And that's silly. Our democracy is the most precious thing that we can have, and, excuse me, and the legislature is just wasting it. And lastly, I, just give me another minute, on the yellow-yellow thing on the work session, please address that, that's a big issue, and hopefully we can address that when we get to the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? There's no more slips, Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. I'm trying, I text Mr. Griffith today because I was trying not to bother the election bureau. I've been doing Facebook Lives, trying to take any pressure out the election bureau as I can about how to, you know, fill out your ballot and all that stuff, but I'm getting this question constantly, how many mail-in ballot applications do we have left to process? Number one. And the second question is, how many registrations do we have left to process? I know yesterday was the deadline for registrations, how many did not make the cutoff that were put in to be processed, how many were not processed? Or are they still there, and because they made the cutoff, they're still being processed? So I'm just getting a lot of questions about that, and I'm trying not to call the election bureau. The biggest problem we have with our elections in this county, if it isn't apparent to everyone in this room, is Denise Williams. She has spent more time trying to figure out a way to finagle drop boxes everywhere that she can, on every street corner, than she did trying to make sure that our process goes well. She's actually created double work for the election bureau, triple work actually, for the election bureau. Emily Cook is doing a hell of a job there, but she's the problem. We all know it in this room, Denise Williams is the problem. Someone needs to take action to remove her, like now, because it isn't going to get better with her around. She has an agenda, it's crystal clear, and, I mean, not one person that has been to these meetings doesn't recognize, or to the election board meetings, doesn't recognize she has a crystal clear agenda. She is destroying this county, and she's responsible for all the discourse that's going on right now. So can somebody make a motion tonight to remove her? Is it possible? Mr. Thornton's shaking his head, no, it's not possible.
Mr. Walsh, we don't appoint the Chair of the Election Board, Mr. Potsco, this goes to your question as well. So you asked about the makeup of the election board and why it's Democratic and not Republican, which, not that that necessarily makes a difference to us, whether they're qualified, but the Elections Board appoints the fifth member of the board. So the Elections Board is the only, they're the only people who can remove that fifth member, not the, not the council.
So we'll work on that tomorrow night.
We, and, and, and some of us on council have actually tried to amend the charter in order to make that five-member election board appointed totally by council, but that failed last year.
And one more thing, I was walking in this morning-
I apologize, I know I answered your question, I'll give you like 20 more seconds.
I apologize too. This morning, I was walking in to take my mom into vote, she's 84 years old, and my sister's going for knee surgery on November 1st, so she's not going to be able to go to the polls, so I took them into vote this morning, walk in through security, a man and a lady, it was around 9:05 AM, you could look at the, maybe 9:10, somewhere around there, you could look at the film, lady comes in, has two mail-in ballot, or two ballots. The security guard says to her, ma'am, you're only allowed to put one in. And she listened to him, and she said, I'm putting this in for my mom. Well, I had a form for my mom to give to my aunt, who needs one as well, or her daughter to bring it in. What is it, the affidavit that they need to have filled out? And I just said to the lady, I said, if you're returning this in for your mom, you have to get this affidavit. And she was not, she was nice, but she just didn't know, and there's just so much confusion with everything going on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else for public comment?
We'll have numbers tomorrow, Mr. Walsh, we'll have numbers for you.
Is that for public comment right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Anybody on the Zoom before we get into this, one more public comment? Anybody on the Zoom before we get into this, one more public comment? No? Okay. Oh, this is Desiree, Ms. Edwards?
Hi, Desiree Edwards Swearswell. I don't know, I was out there listening. Was Denise Williams appointed, or was she elected? She was neither, so how did she get that position?
She was appointed by the Board of Elections, by the four members of the Board of Elections. Actually, it wasn't even the four members of the Board of Elections that currently exist.
So she was appointed?
She was appointed by members of the Board of Elections, not the County Council. We did not appoint her. The rules of the County Charter say that the Elections Board has four members that are appointed by the Charter, and one member who is appointed by the four other members so that it remains quote-unquote nonpartisan. It'll be two members from the Republican Party, or the majority of the county, and two members of the second party of majority of the county. So it'll be the Democratic and Republican Party in this county. So then, you'll have two members of the Democrat, two members of the Republican, the fifth member is appointed by those four members of the Election Board. So at least three of them have to agree. Now, when she was appointed, that was at a time when there were not five members of the Board, because there were some things that caused some Board members to be removed, which we can discuss at length, but that's not for this council.
Okay, so actually, we go higher then. So it's Ms. Croco.
No, it's not Manager Croco. It's the Election Board is who appointed her. By the Charter, not the manager, not the council.
So, okay, so if someone does wrong on the Election Board, then what, they just get to stay their whole term, like, and nothing can be done?
If they commit an unlawful act of some kind, then we will have cause to remove them, or the Election Board will have cause to remove them. If they commit a thing that you disagree with politically, I apologize that this is a back-and-forth, because it's not what this is supposed to be.
No, I understand.
But if they commit something that politically I don't agree with, that's not a good enough reason to remove them from the Board.
All right. Well, I still have a couple minutes, so I might as well.
Okay. You have one minute.
There's a lot going on with the ballots, and not to mention, I heard something about the poll worker training today, what they were told, that there will not be chargers being sent with the poll books. So if the poll books die, isn't that setting up a form of chaos in the election, the polling places? If people come in to vote and they're told that the polling book is, the battery died and it's not charged? I think we're being set up, because we're all talking about safety, safety, safety so much. I think we are being set up.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards. Mr. Grantied?
Joe Grantied, Plains Township. Just want to start off by asking you again to remove Denise Williams. She's caused the chaos in this county. Half of the county is unhappy about the job she's doing. She has no desire to fix anything, and she should not be in the position she's in. And to let her stay there is negligent for you to let her stay in that position and do the damage she's doing to this county, and the people, and the disenfranchisement that Before you said that, Ms. Croco, you said something about in the process, the ballots that were misspelled are going to be set aside and reviewed. Does that review give them the ability to throw them out?
They'll only be reviewed if the voter didn't submit a second ballot. And it's up to the Board, the Board of Election, the five-member Board of Election are going to review those ballots. They do it in public, and it has to meet all the other requirements. So it will be up to the Board.
So they could throw those first votes out?
Yes, they can, and the second ones, yeah.
So then, these people won't get their vote.
But it has to meet, it has to meet all the requirements.
See, that's not what I heard when you were on the news. I heard that they would count the first vote, if the second ones came in, or the second ones, some people wouldn't send the second one in, that they would count the first one. That's what I heard on the news.
Right, and if it meets the requirements?
No, that's not what you said on the news.
That is what I said, because I say it every time, because it has to meet the other requirements. If it doesn't meet the other requirements, it wouldn't have counted anyway.
That gives everybody the false promise that...
This is going to be in public. The Board will review those ballots in public.
Right.
I can tell you, we're going to have...
All right, all right. Mr. Grantied, do you have any other comments to make?
Yeah, I'm talking right now.
Okay, you can continue to speak, but this is not, this is supposed to be public comment. Period.
What, I'm the only one who can have a question answered?
No, you had a back-and-forth with Manager Croco, which I've allowed, okay? But I want you to finish making your comments, please. Trying to be helpful and have all the questions answered.
I'm asking you if those ballots being reviewed can be thrown out, and these people will be deprived of their vote.
That's up to the Board.
So, and I don't have any, I don't have any confidence that the Board, the Board will do what's right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grantied.
I'm not done.
No, Mr. Grantied, you're done. Your time is up. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Grantied.
I was forced to use drop boxes.
Mr. Grantied, please.
I was forced to use drop boxes.
Mr. Grantied, I'm going to have you removed by the chair.
You interrupted me, I want my time back.
Mr. Grantied, I gave you an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Grantied, three minutes, and you went over to three.
Please sit down, okay? We're trying to be helpful. We're trying to be helpful to everybody and get you answers to your questions, okay? Please, we'll help you answer your questions. We don't want to throw anybody out. We want to give everybody an opportunity to speak and to have their questions answered. But there is a format. Yes, I did. You spoke, and you spoke to Manager Croco, okay? You had a back-and-forth, which should not be allowed, by the way, which I did allow, which I did allow. I allowed it for other people, so I allowed it for you too, because we're trying to get questions answered. Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Skeen, Attorney Skeen had a comment to make.
I just wanted to note, it sounded like Mr. Grantied was saying that we were going to throw away ballots, but they're never thrown away, they're stored. So whether or not the Board counts them is one issue, but they're not getting thrown away, they'll be kept.
Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, it becomes very evident to me here tonight, and for the past couple of years, that much of the public does not understand how our Charter is written. Now, I don't agree with all the provisions of the Charter, but I took a note to follow it when I got sworn in, as did everybody up here. But I don't agree with the way some of that is set up. And some of the public doesn't like the answers they get, but those are the true answers, and that's what's happening. I know everyone likes to blame council in this county, and we sit here, we take it, but a lot of what we're being blamed for, we have no purview, we have no authority whatsoever to do the things that you want us to do. And as many times as we try to explain that, people get frustrated, and they come back a month later and start yelling about it again. So yeah, I'm a little frustrated. I agree 1,000% with Mr. Haas's comments tonight. He's right on. He said the things I've been saying for three years now here. The most frustrating thing I think I've endured on council the past three years was this Election Board, not the people on it necessarily, but the rules and the regulations between council and the Election Board. We cannot tell them what to do, period. We can't. It's against the law. I don't want to be in violation of the Charter, all right? You may want us to do it, but we can't do it. I found that out early, when I was sitting here, and I was frustrated. The only way that could be changed is through the Charter language. And guess what? We have a government study commission that meets all the time, every week, a couple times a month, right? Meeting all the time, discussing with the public what needs to be changed in the Charter. A lot of these issues you come frustrated to us with should be directed at the Government Study Commission, and your suggestions should be sent to them and spoken to them. And I'm frustrated, as everyone is. And we'll continue to beat a punching bag up here, as will the county manager, but everything she does, she's following the law. We may not like it, she's getting direction from the state, she doesn't act recklessly or on a whim, that's not her. But we'll take it, we'll continue to take it. But I encourage everyone in the public, out there in Zoom land and across the county, if you're frustrated with these answers you heard tonight, go to a government study commission and tell them to change the Charter. Don't tell us, because we tried. We tried, Mr. Wilovich tried last year, a bunch of us tried the last two years, to amend the Charter with the very things that you people are saying. And every time, legally, we were shot down and said, we are not allowed to do that, those are structural changes, the only way that could be done is to form a government study commission. So that's what we did, and we put that question on a ballot, and the voters voted to have a government study commission to come in and address these issues that everybody's frustrated about. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilovich, and then?
Yeah, on the record, just so everybody knows, I did try to change that, and the same Board of Elections that we're complaining about is the ones that shot it down. We had 11-1 majority that passed law saying that we wanted to change the Election Board and left it up to the voters. The Board of Elections shot it down. It wasn't us, it was on them.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Chair. And I agree again with Mr. Thornton said, because essentially, the Government Study Commission was formed on that very issue. That was the linchpin. We've had about three major issues here in Homero. I generally like how the new government runs, I really do. I like the format. I like how everyday people can run and still have regular jobs and regular lives and aren't full-time politicians. I really like that. So the Government Study Commission, I wish they would really focus, I wish they would do the homework and would have paid attention. It seemed like a lot just don't know what the issues have been. It seemed, I don't know. I think that they could spend a lot more time addressing this particular issue, the time of how many council members have, what the size is, all these things that really haven't mattered over the past 12 years. But this one does. And this one, I agree 100%, Mr. Thornton, that should be square number one. Because again, if they paid attention to what was going on these past few years, they would have seen that one was always in the news, this one. And aside from the Office of Law issue that we've talked about for many years, those are the two big ones. But again, I wish they would focus on that and some of the other minutia.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith, I'll let you go in one second, but just to add to that, when I attended the Government Study Commission, where I was to give testimony about what changes I believe should be in the Charter as the Chair of Council, that was one of the major ones that I discussed, was the composition of the Election Board, and some of the issues that are related to that. I talked about a few of them during the meeting, and there was quite a bit of conversation. I thought it was a very positive conversation, honestly. They all seemed to listen. It's, you know, it is clear that sometimes there might be like a political undertone to it, but I thought that we all had a pretty open-ended discussion. The one thing I was disappointed with was that there weren't very many members of the public at that meeting. That is probably the most important meeting that you should be attending right now, is the Government Study Commission meeting. If there are things that you don't like about the way this county is being run, they can be changed, they will listen to you. And if they don't listen to you, then vote no on the new Charter. It's that simple. And we can start from scratch. Ms. Smith?
I have a comment that is actually about Agenda Item Number Five, was seven. I just wanted to juxtapose and compare some language. At Paragraph Five in the resolution, it says, whereas Luzerne County Council discourages the use of election ballot drop boxes because of safety and security concerns associated with them. Comparatively, in a letter from the Attorney General, who is the lead prosecutor in Pennsylvania, dated October 3rd, which reads in relevant part, pursuant to the Pennsylvania Election Code, only the Luzerne County Board of Elections has the authority to issue a lawful instruction or order to deploy drop box ballots, ballot drop boxes for the November 2024 general election. Should you fail to comply with the lawful instruction or order, the Board of Elections could take action, including filing a civil mandamus action to compel performance. There are also potential criminal consequences for failing to comply. Twenty-five Pennsylvania Statute, Section 3501, disobeying lawful instructions; twenty-five Pennsylvania Statute, Section 3549, hindering or delaying performance of duty. And when we passed this resolution, we gave an instruction about drop boxes.
No, we did not.
That's not true.
I discouraged the use.
That's not true.
I discouraged the use that, I discouraged that everybody here, don't drive all night to Florida tonight, because you'll be tired. I could discourage a lot of things. We're not mandating them to do anything. That's all, I'm just, it's a recommendation, but we're allowed to discourage people here.
I'm certainly for the protection of elections, but that paragraph does concern me, given that language. That's all.
All right, anybody else for public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's 7:18, we'll restart at 7:25.
Recording stopped.[1546.33]
Recording stopped.[346.62]
As always, we keep maximizing our, the interest rate, obviously, on all of our accounts. Our ARPA cash balance is fifty-two million, twenty-six thousand, one-eleven, and the ARPA interest earned year-to-date is two million, four sixty-seven, four seventy-one. Our total ARPA interest that we've earned since inception, our, our total of all the ARPA interests that we've earned is at six-point-eight million dollars. Um, I also just want to briefly mention that we put out an RFP for Financial Advisory Services and received two submissions. The prospective firms were interviewed yesterday by a panel consisting of two county council members, Gray Wulovich and Jimmy Sabatino, so thank you for your time in interviewing them with us, we appreciate it, as well as Michelle Sparrow and myself. We'll be reviewing the grading and making a recommendation at the next council meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from council members?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rozell. Next up, we have the LEO Airport Contract Discussion. Manager Crocomo.
Uh, well, uh, we have District Attorney Sangadolche here as well, uh, who will speak to it. Uh, I'll give you a brief, uh, history. The Avoca Police Department provided, uh, law enforcement, uh, to the AVP. And as everybody is aware, our AVP airport, the majority of that airport is in Luzerne County. There's just a very small portion, uh, I think, on a runway, uh, that is in Lackawanna County. This happened in about 2021. Avoca pulled out, uh, without any notice, and our district attorney was able to, uh, step in, uh, and provide detectives and police, uh, to, uh, have, uh, police officers there at the airport. And, uh, at that time, there was federal funding. Uh, there was federal funding for, uh, positions, and the airports then, uh, made up the difference of, uh, if the monies from the federal government didn't, uh, come through. Fast forward to maybe about six months ago, Sam, uh, the federal government pooled, uh, their funding, uh, and, uh, we, uh, we continued to provide, uh, the law enforcement. The district attorney has the money in his budget, uh, to do that, and the airport did, uh, continue to make, uh, contributions as they did in the past. Uh, I know, uh, that our district attorney, myself, members of the, uh, uh, board, uh, and the airport, uh, were reaching out to our federal representatives, uh, and, um, we couldn't get, uh, any, uh, guarantee, uh, that the funding will return. Uh, I think the latest was that perhaps in June, uh, of 2025. There needs to be, uh, police officers, uh, at that airport. TSA doesn't have, uh, the jurisdiction, uh, to arrest, uh, and, uh, the airport is increasing, uh, their flights, uh, passengers coming in and out. Uh, I'll let the district attorney speak to, uh, what they have encountered there. But, uh, our, uh, county controller, uh, raises good points that, uh, Luzerne County is funding, uh, the, this project. Uh, I did reach out, uh, and we did meet, uh, with the commissioners from Lackawanna County, uh, and, uh, they don't have the funds, uh, to, uh, to contribute, even if some of those officers would come from Lackawanna County. Uh, and we did speak to the airport, and the airport is looking at their budget, uh, and will be following up with them, uh, to determine what, uh, increase and maybe a contribution to the funding of this project. It's an important project. We have to have, we, the police have to respond in five minutes. Uh, there is no way that the Avoca Police Department, uh, will be able to respond to an incident, uh, at the airport in five minutes. So, uh, that's the history. Uh, I don't know, Sam, if you want to add more particulars?
Um, really only that, you know, the, the way that we lost the funding was, uh, there was literally a, a budget passed, I think it was the stopgap budget, and they literally defunded all airport police across the country, is my understanding of what happened. So we basically woke up one day with, you know, notice that like in forty-eight hours, uh, you're not getting the money. So, we had to scramble and figure out, uh, how to do it. I think an important part of this history is that, you know, in, in putting together a, a police force, uh, it's not that easy a task. So it seems, you know, you, you have to cover two shifts every single day, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and the constant discussion about whether they're going to exist or not, you know, is wreaking tur- turmoil on the staff. You know, imagine, you don't know day-to-day whether you're going to have your job tomorrow, uh, is a problem. It seems that in every meeting we have about this, whether it's with the airport board or discussions, you know, uh, about it, you know, the knee-jerk reaction is like, bas- basically, pull the police out, and I hope that nobody on council supports that. I mean, there just is not an option to me, considering the nine-eleven terrorists came through an airport in Maine the size of Avoca. Uh, I think we need to commit ourselves to the fact that it's, even though it's called the Scranton-Wilkes-Barre Airport, it's squarely in Luzerne County but for a tiny sliver, so Lackawanna County would have no jurisdiction anyway. Uh, I think it's our job to protect the public and then work together to row in the same direction to chase the funding for it. Uh, I have approached on multiple occasions Senator Casey, Congressman Cartwright, uh, we're in the process of seeking, uh, seeing if there are any state grants that could possibly help defray the costs, and we've had multiple meetings with the airport, uh, to suss out what's in, what's in their budget that they can help reimburse us for. Uh, I know it's an unpleasant pill to swallow, especially for me, uh, but being that this is really a Luzerne County airport, I think the Luzerne County DA's office is in the best position to provide the security. Uh, no municipality, municipality, of course, could absorb, uh, paying for an extra police officer. Most of the surrounding jurisdictions have only one police officer on shift at a time. And I know, you know, certainly not a cost that I really want to take out of my budget, but I think, uh, safety at the airport is one of the primary responsibilities of government, uh, and I think, you know, it's our responsibility to figure out how to get it paid for.
Any questions for the DA? Ms. Smith, or, and then Mr. Thorne?
I, I, three, but I think they'll be quick.
Okay.
Is that right? Thank you. Um, welcome Attorney Sangadolche.
Thank you.
Um, this one might be obvious, but let's just get it on the table. What are the consequences of having no police at the airport?
Shut down the airport.
Okay. Um, and do you know how other airports across the country staff their police?
So, my understanding, and I've, I've discussed this with multiple agencies, you know, as you can imagine, uh, JFK is staffed by NYPD, which has, you know, a hundred-million-dollar budget probably.
Would we have that budget?
Yeah, we, yeah, I wish we would have that.
Right.
But I don't want their problems, so maybe, be careful what we ask for, right?
That's true.
Uh, same thing, it was Lehigh Valley, is the Allentown Police Department is a substantial force. Uh, I haven't found out, you know, if anyone else is, I can't imagine that people aren't complaining about this. Um, so, I think that some of that pressure is the reason that we keep hearing the funding was supposed to come back, but I haven't seen any definitive answer that it's, it's definitely coming back, and I haven't seen any budgets that, you know, where it's promised to us.
So, and lastly, um, I think the Avoca Airport is one of the best things about this area, but it, from what you're saying, it seems like we have a choice. We fund this now and try to chase money, or we shut down the airport.
Right, that, so the, there is a backup plan, I don't want to be a doomsday professor, uh, but, uh, the backup plan is that if, if you can't have somebody actually at the airport, um, that the federal government requires a response time of five minutes, which Ramilda mentioned.
Mentioned, yes.
And, you know, the surround, knowing the surrounding departments, it's just not possible. If they're on a call, you're looking at a thirty-minute response time. So, not to mention, the, all of the safety reasons, that shouldn't be, you know, that shouldn't be possible. We've had multiple incident, you know, fights in the bathroom, we've had overdoses in the airport, we've had, you would be shocked at how many guns actually come through, most thankfully unwittingly, you know, no one with, uh, ill intent. Uh, we've made several arrests at the airport for that reason.
I did see that display maybe a couple of years ago, where you showed all the things that got found.
So, uh, I think having someone on-site at the checkpoint at the airport is, you know, is a necessity, and, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm not going to stop chasing the money. I think, um, repeatedly announcing that the government has defunded these police is some way to help get it done, it's a bad message. The people of Luzerne County don't like the idea of defunding the police, and if we have two-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars to give to Ukraine, hopefully we have money to fund the Avoca Airport Police.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Thorne?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Attorney Sangadolche, I don't, I don't think anybody here wants the airport to shut down. I know I don't, and nobody here wants no police. I want plenty of police there. Um, I, I look at Lackawanna County, Luzerne County, and, uh, I understand, yeah, they're out of money, and they're borrowing money just to make it to the end of the year. Maybe not their fault, the people sitting there, maybe it was the errors, sins of the past, kind of what we inherited here twelve, fourteen years ago, county council, from the commissioners, uh, which Harry Haas would be well aware of. But, having said that, um, Lackawanna County is roughly half the size of Luzerne County. Um, I think they have roughly a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand residents, we have three-thirty. Um, I, I'm just doing a safe assumption here that the people that fly out of Avoca, probably a third of them are from Lackawanna County, maybe, and two-thirds are from Luzerne County, based on populations. Um, I don't think the footprint of the airport has anything to do with it, that it's all located in Luzerne County. Personally, I don't. Uh, we're not charging property tax, that would be on us. Uh, I think the, the passengers want safety, and we all want safety. We, uh, I would think the airlines flying out of there want safety. Uh, I, I, I would encourage the airport board to look at this, uh, a little harder and say, maybe we assess every passenger five bucks extra on a ticket, or seven dollars, whatever the number is, they have the math, they have the number of passengers, and, and, and use that money for security, because they're the ones who are flying. Um, I, I'm never really a fan of all of the Luzerne County resident taxpayers paying for something that, like that, because most of Luzerne County taxpayers probably don't fly, and they're paying for that security for the few that do. So I'm not a huge fan of that. I don't know what the answer is, hopefully the federal government steps up, funds it again, but if they don't, um, Lackawanna County could do what Luzerne County did many years ago. We borrowed the money because we had a shortfall, and if they want safety for their passengers, their Lackawanna County passengers that are using the airport, they should provide some funding for the security in the airport, regardless of what footprint it sits in, it's not property tax. So, that's the way I feel. Do you, uh, my, my other question is, um, that's a comment, sorry. Uh, my question is, for an, on an annual basis, what would that cost for the security for the airport?
The total cost of the security for the airport is, you know, comes to about twelve-thousand dollars a month, so roughly a hundred and forty.
Hundred-and-forty-four thousand per, per year.
Uh, we're currently being reimbursed, uh, about twenty-five-hundred a month, that's what the airport has allotted, um, just in their budget alone, I know that they're looking for more money.
So we're still looking at one-ten, one-twelve, maybe?
Right. I mentioned the footprint only for jurisdictional purposes, there was some talk about, uh, Lackawanna County DA's office sending detectives, except they would have to become Luzerne County detectives in order to provide security there.
Mm-hmm, right, I understand, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Krishnowski?
I just had a curious question, what if something happened there? What would be the response time for like an EMS to get there, from where you are? I mean, because what, what if, God forbid, something happened? How, how long of a time would it take?
Um, from, for whom?
Whoever would you, who would you call, if something was to happen at the airport?
Um, well, if, if our police are there, they, they respond immediately, so.
But like, if you needed like an ambulance or something like that, like?
Call nine-one-one.
District Attorney Sangadolche, I can answer that question, because my ambulance goes there.
All right.
So they, the, the airport, the airport fire department, uh, they're all trained EMTs, I believe, so they would go and they would provide the quick response service, they would get to the person that's injured or whatever the issue is first, they'd start, you know, basic life support care, and then an ambulance would be called via nine-one-one, the radio, whatever, however they would do it, and within probably five to ten minutes, an ambulance, fire truck, whatever it is, would be there.
Okay, so if, say for an example, a bomb went off or whatever, how long, it would just take you five minutes to get there?
An ambulance or a fire truck. It, that, but the, those services, EMS, fire, and police are three completely different situations, each one of them is unique, each one of them has different, uh, uh, positives and negatives to them.
Yeah, capabilities, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's different for every single one for the, um, for the response time of the airport specifically, and to the police department, that's an issue, because as the district attorney said, uh, many of the departments around there only have one officer on at a time, they could be on a call, they could be in the center of their town, which is more than five minutes away from the airport. Um, EMS is, is a different story, because there's different levels of, of certification for each, um.
No, I understand what you're saying, I guess my point too was like, do, do, do they, do you proactively do, uh, you know, like tests?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, that happens, they just had one recently.
Okay, okay, well, I was just, because that's very, very important, especially when you're gonna, I mean, police are one thing, but a, an accident can really truly happen. So, thank you.
Yeah.
As an aside, though, if a, were a bomb to go off, that would be a priority one.
Yeah, that would be a different.
You know, every officer, you know, leaves their domestic violence call, the harassment, whatever, they drop everything and rush there, and that would obviously be the most important thing going on in the county. You would have people from a hundred miles around coming to that.
Uh, Mr. Lescavage?
So if there were ownership involved in the airport, would it be a fifty-fifty split between Lackawanna and Luzerne County? Because I know the board is broken up of board members from both counties.
Yeah, you, you know, that, that's a good question, I, I don't actually know the answer to that, what the responsibility of the board is and how, you know, how that developed, you know, is it a fifty-fifty, we share the costs? I don't, really don't know how the board works, to be perfectly honest with you.
Okay, my next question is, from an insurance standpoint, does that number include insurance for these police officers? Because we all know it's a litigious society these days, and somebody feels like they were wrong, next thing you know, they're suing us because we gave the money to fund those police officers, how does that work?
So to my knowledge, it doesn't cost us extra, it's covered under our law enforcement policy because, because of our detectives and drug task force.
So then, at some point, we're putting extra people there, though, there's probably a cost associated, would I have to think that we're putting up people at the airport?
You know, I, I don't know if it's like a package deal, if you have up to so many, then you're covered, or, you know, if it's a matter of the number of claims, but our insurance, to my knowledge, has not gone up, and I believe that we're self-covered up to a certain amount, but.
It hasn't gone up because of the, because of the LEO program. Obviously, it would, they're county employees.
Right.
So, um, if something happens, uh, we're responsible, just like the, the prison, uh, just like CYF, so.
The only reason I say that, it's just another extension from the courthouse where a problem may occur. So then, I would never not fund protection for that, but then on the other side, you have Lackawanna wanting to be in the glory of having the airport but not support it. It, it's kind of irritating, only because we have that situation, then we run into this with the busing in different counties, and just because we're trying to be really fiscally responsible here, it's not fair to say, well, you know what, we're, can't make ends meet, but we'd like you to pick up the share. So I, I agree with Brian, I mean, I would have to think that a dollar on a ticket would pick up that cost.
So I actually did inquire about that at our last meeting, and they told us that's not possible, the tickets are issued and billed by the airlines, I, I don't know if that's regulated by the federal government, there, as I did, like, put one dollar on every ticket, nobody would even, you know, they, it's not like they wouldn't buy the ticket, uh, but the, uh, I think the executive director it was, told me that that's not, that's not allowed.
I mean, it was brought up tonight too about the court system, you know, and I had, I actually reached out when I first got on council, because I wanted to figure out what the answer to that was myself, and I did contact a couple individuals in that regard, and they chuckled, which really annoyed me. And, and my response was, I don't know what you're finding so funny, because we have dollars that are due to us, and we're promised, and we don't receive them. So as all these costs keep escalating, then it just goes back on the taxpayers. And while, again, I would never not fund that, we just can't not sit here and ask questions on why somebody doesn't do their part.
And that, that's exactly why I said, you know, hopefully we can all row in the same direction and chase the funding, there's, you know, more people are responsible than just the Luzerne County taxpayers, you know, more people should, could carry this burden.
So I agree with you a thousand percent with sending money to the Ukraine, and we have money for every other thing, in addition to letting these people down in their own country in North Carolina and pretend it like they didn't exist, you could easily send this money, which to me was, i- it's, peanuts is correct, you know? So I hope people remember, they remember that vividly, to know what is going on here. Thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, well said, Kevin, a comment, um, and then a question for the attorney, Ms. Chair. So we have board members from the council that sit on that, on that county board, are they, are they holding the Lackawanna County people to fire? Are they asking to not only fulfill their responsibility for, I think they should pay for security, and also, um, for the, the ARC payments? You know, we've been, this is one of those early things from Home Rule, that we're covering a hundred percent of the retirement cost too, so it's, it's a different issue, but it's, it's one and the same, because it comes down to that. Um, go ahead, Ramilla, speak.
The, the, uh, the, uh, the employees, uh, we, it, some, the employees from Luzerne County are covered in our pension, and then they have the Lackawanna County pension, there are two pensions. There are two pensions, I know this because I, I helped someone get their pensions, and, and, and then if you're an employee of the airport, you have a Luzerne County pension and a Lackawanna County pension, and it's pro-rated.
Because this, this was an issue since day one, so that, is that a recent development, Ramilda, or?
It's, it, it, ever since I, I've been involved, that's, that's been the case.
All right, I mean, even since the Bob Lawton days, that was identified as an issue, that's, that's news to me. Um, secondly, a little, a little more controversial to Ms. Chair, so, Attorney Sangadolche, what, in December of 2021, we saw these clandestine flights that were flying in undocumented minors into our country, into Wilkes-Barre's Grand International Airport, and the best we could get was that the governor said, oh, they're not going to stay here, which was totally unacceptable. I, I don't think we've had any situations like that since, I know you've only been, um, been protecting the airport for a certain amount of time. Um, have, have you seen any of that? And if, if so, what are the contingency plans to stop that? Because human trafficking is a severe issue, we know it happens, and we know it happens through the, through the airways even, so if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so, we, we actually don't know how much it happens. Um, in the cases that we find where we've identified human trafficking, the victims more often than not don't even know that they're victims. Uh, you know, they're, they've been brainwashed into thinking that, you know, it's some kind of loving relationship, in the cases that we have seen where we can get a victim to actually tell us what happened, uh, many times they come around and, you know, uh, there are threats that, you know, we'll go back and kill the rest of your family if you don't do what we need, so, um, we don't even know how bad the problem is, us members of law enforcement that actually see it. Uh, we have not seen it to the extent that where they are, keep in mind that we are only there for departing flights, so once the last flight departs, the shift technically is over, um, because you've gone through security on some other airline, they don't quite care who comes into the airport from the airplane. Uh, those flights that happened, uh, I note, the ones that at least we got reports of were under cover of night, they were after midnight, long after the last flight has departed Avoca. Uh, we only got one or two reports of that, and of course, by the time we found out, it was almost the next morning. Um, there is a contingency plan when we see cases like that, we have direct contacts with the FBI, uh, and we work very closely with them, the US Attorney's Office in cases like that, um, so we do have, have plans on what to do if we identify it.
Very good, so we, we missed that, we missed Santa too at the same time, it sounds like, all right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Ms. Smith?
Um, Mr. Haas mentioned, and asked the members of the airport board whether or not you're trying to hold the feet to the, their feet to the fire, the Lackawanna board members, have you had this discussion?
I had a discussion, and Attorney Sangadolche, we, we met, uh, with Bill Gaun, uh, Gaun and, uh, their solicitor. Uh, they obviously don't have any objection if the airport makes a contribution, uh, but we did reach out to them that, you know, we would have slots available for, uh, individuals, police officers from Lackawanna County, uh, if, if they would pay for those slots, uh, and they said they don't have, uh, the money to do that, and they would have to become detectives, uh.
So that's my next question, right.
In the Luzerne County.
Yes, they'd have to be detectives for Luzerne County, because, because of the jurisdiction.
It's a legal jurisdiction that we're talking about, it's, it's, it's not necessarily, it's a, it's a legal jurisdiction we're talking, the three of us are talking about, yeah.
Yes. Um, how difficult would that be, and would that have ramifications for Luzerne County? Like, would they be entitled to more of a Luzerne County pension? Because they're, they're?
Not more, they would just are part-time, they would get a Luzerne County pension, they're, they're part-timers are, uh, they can get, uh, pensions.
Okay, so there's no further ramifications if you do make them into Luzerne County detectives?
No.
Is that correct? Okay, and, and is that a process that is handleable?
It's very simple, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, quick question, and this may be a more appropriate question for the two board members at the airport, three, three board members, Mr. Wulovich, Ms. McDermott, and?
Manager Crocomo.
And, oh, Manager Crocomo. Any one of you, if you know, if you don't know, that's fine, I'm just wondering, if that airport was sold, let's say we just all got out from under, it was sold to a private entity that wanted to own the airport and run it, the proceeds that would be received from that sale, would any part of it be shared with Lackawanna County?
Yes. There's a, an agreement from the nineteen-fifties that I know that I, I, I found over at the Record Retention Building when I was the chief county solicitor, um, I, I will find it.
All right, I was just wondering.
Because we were talking about the, about the allocation of who pays for what, uh, and I, I have it somewhere, and I will.
No, I, I was just wondering, I didn't want to say it, I was just wondering if anybody knew that, and so it seems to me they would enjoy the fruits of a, the profits of a sale that would be acceptable to Lackawanna County, uh, but I, 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 I just go back to, they should borrow more money. I, I'm sorry to say it, Luzerne County had to do it, we've been living the pain for fourteen years now of paying down a debt inherited from previous commissioners, four-hundred-and-sixty-six million. Our Luzerne County taxpayers have been funding that solely by themselves, because of the sins of the past. I feel bad for Lackawanna County, I really do, I go there a lot, they need to borrow a little more money to help provide security to some extent, I don't know if the ratio's one to two or one to three, but something, that's just my opinion, but I'll, I'll always vote to support police and security at the airport, thank you.
Mr. Wulovich?
Well, if you want, like we do with the Hazleton Transit, we could all write a letter and send it to them. So we could all write a letter and send it to them, like we do with the Hazleton, and we could see how that works.
We could certainly do that. Any other questions for the DA?
I just want to couch, they would have to work a thousand hours a year in order to qualify for the pension, and I, I don't think that that, they would, but I, I don't know what the scheduling is, but they, you know, theoretically could.
I just didn't know what, you know, there are further ramifications than what we immediately think sometimes, so I was just asking about that, but, thank you, Ramilda.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution approving a contract with broker for insurance brokerage coverage for services for fiscal year 2025 and 2026, with an optional one-year renewal for 2027. Ms. Sparrow?
Hi, um, we had, uh, our contract is coming up at the end of this year, twelve-thirty-one, with our insurance broker. Several years ago, we decided to RFP for a broker to handle all of the insurance policies that the county has, so we typically do it on a two-year contract with a one-year optional renewal. So, uh, the contract that would be, uh, in front of you now, is starting January one of 2025. There were two brokers, we interviewed three, it's all in the, um, information that was provided. We had three brokers come in for interviews, and the top two brokers that were ranked by the committee members are here tonight to, um, each give you a brief presentation, but I don't know if you have any questions before I turn it over to them?
Any questions from council members? All right, let's turn it over to the brokerage services.
Okay, Brown and Brown, Paul Pugelli, I'm gonna just.
Um, okay, we'll just, we'll need to have that published for the public.
Okay, there's a copy for Sharon.
Okay. All right.
Well, it's on, it's on the screen for the.
Yeah, it's, it's on the Zoom, it's on the Zoom, yes.
Good evening, my name is Paul Pugelli, I'm here with my associate, Patrick Brown, we are from Brown and Brown Insurance, and we, we want to just start by saying thank you for the opportunity to be able to present our proposal to the county. I can tell you that, having been the broker for the county in the past, we know, we understand the operations, we are familiar with the operations of the county, and conversely, the county is familiar with us, we were the broker for roughly seven years, uh, and we were recommended for renewal multiple times, uh, during that time. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with our organization, we specialize in two major things, uh, one is municipalities, and we currently represent about a hundred-and-twenty municipalities in the eastern part of Pennsylvania, and we also have a very heavy representation of health and human service type organizations, children and youth, group homes, things of the nature. So I feel like we have the perfect combination of skills. of skills within our office to service the needs of the county. And we have done so, as I said, in the past. You have, just a little bit more about our organization. We, in our office, we have about 100 people, 10 of which are on the municipal insurance team. So we have a lot of depth. And all the same people, with the addition of Patrick, that were handling the county's insurance, would be handling the county's insurance again. And Pat will get a little bit into the game plan on that, but just to let you know about that. So we're actually just more experienced. We've got a little bit more expertise than we did the last time we were here, et cetera. So you, you have a handout. You also have the overhead as well. And so I'll just kind of try and touch on some of the major points if I could. Just to say, I, again, familiar with, familiar with the county. I look around. I actually see a few faces I'm familiar with from the past. And so I feel because of that and because of having worked it, we could just hit the ground running. We wouldn't need much in the way of orientation. We would just review the policies and get going. So again, just to kind of quickly go through why choose Brown and Brown. So again, we, we did represent the county in the past and were recommended for removal several times. We're familiar with the county's operations. And, you know, our, the office that I work for has roughly 50 years' experience in municipal insurance and roughly the same amount of experience for the health and human service organizations. And the way, the way we operate is we try to focus on reducing claims. Because when you reduce claims, you reduce your premiums. And so our risk management programs, our claims analysis, those are the skills that we bring to do that. And we, and we did that in the past. Again, we'd be serviced by our most senior staff members. So what would our focus be? Keeping premium increases to a minimum as we have in the past. I, providing the best coverage with the lowest premiums, deductibles, filling coverage gaps. We would look at the policies. In the past, we, we have filled coverage gaps that caused claims that were not covered by insurance. So we, so we would, we would look to do the same thing again. Provide the risk management claim services, solicit quotes from all the insurance companies. And I can tell you that we have a lot of leverage with the insurance companies that are in this sector because of how much representation we have. 120 municipalities. I think, I don't know exactly, but I, we're probably in the top three, the top five agents in the state for representing municipal insurance. We would provide prompt service and maintain good communication with county staff. Just to touch on some of the things we accomplished, we, we, over a five-year period, we had, we actually brought the insurance premiums down. And a lot of that had to do with how the data was presented to the insurance companies. In particular, when we looked at some of the claims for the public official policy never reached the insurance company because the deductible was so high, we, we went to the insurance company and showed them 10 years of data and said, you cannot justify $150,000 deductible when there's never been a claim, or maybe one claim that, that even reached that. So those are the kinds of things that we look at. We reduced the deductibles on the public official. We reduced the cyber deductible from 150 to $10,000. So that was very significant. Again, fill the coverage gap. The other service that we provide is we work with the safety committee. You have to have someone who's certified to be approved by the state to be able to certify that your safety committee for your self-insurance or workers' comp is eligible. And, and we did that and would continue to do that. We also realized some savings in the medical insurance plan. And one of the things we looked at, that no one had looked at prior, is that the medical stop-loss insurance that the county had resulted in a reimbursement that no one really pursued. And when we looked at it, we immediately got working on that. And there was an $800,000 reimbursement back to the county. So those are just some of the accomplishments. We, we provided a full list of all the things that we did, but those are just some of the accomplishments, including conducting classes, et cetera. At this point, I'll just quickly turn it over to Pat, who will just talk to you a little bit about what we would do if we are appointed, your program.
Good evening. So as far as the game plan, kind of what Paul was touching on is we would really take a proactive approach. We would jump right in. The good news is everybody who was servicing the county and provided that great service for seven years that we did have it is still there. Erin and Lisa, who Michelle and her team are very familiar with, would, we would all jump right in, right away, get the policy, start digging in, start looking to take those proactive steps to reduce some of the claims, reduce the severity. That's, again, that's the way that we do things. From a proactive approach to not only stop the claims and bring them down, but to make you all look more attractive to the carriers out in the municipal space. As Paul said, we have two large teams of not only municipalities and eight health and human services that, you know, are experts. They do it on a day-in, day-out basis. They, they know it. Provide ongoing risk management services to identify the root causes of existing claims, as well as reduce likelihood of future claims. Provide the necessary training to support and implement the goals we have jointly established. That would be Lisa and Gordon. They would engage immediately, work with your risk management people. I know you guys have a lot of resources as, as far as risk management. We would look to see if anything that we could do to enhance that, see what's working, what's not working, and craft the strategy that's, that would be the most effective. Continuously evaluate and monitor the adequacy, adequacy of insurance coverages. This is a, you know, an ever-changing marketplace. And we would not only do our initial policy review as soon as we were appointed, but continue to monitor any kind of coverages or any kind of gaps that might come up. Improve the entire claims administration process by providing meaningful claims analysis and report to identify root causes by loss types and loss departments. We would do quarterly claims review where we're really driving the open claims. You know, these days especially, a lot of these carriers that are bogged down, these claims, a lot of the adjusters have a lot on their plate due to staffing issues and, and other things. So it's, it's really important to have a proactive quarterly claims review, to make sure that somebody's there driving the car, pushing, pushing everything along. Implement, improve record keeping to exist in identifi- identification of claims prompts areas, which will help direct the necessary risk management and loss mitigation efforts. So not only some of the hard costs that you see when it comes to actual claims, but some of the soft costs as well. What are you paying out that's not being filed as claims? What about the deductibles? We have a system where we can give you generated reports each quarter to show exactly what your insurance costs are. Use claims analysis to improve record keeping, to provide good information to prospective insurance companies with the goal of reducing both premiums and deductibles, allowing input by the county and defense council selection, and allowing for handling of some claims by the county solicitor's office. That's something that Paul can speak to, but we've had success with that for the seven years that we were the broker for the county. So overall, establish an aggressive and ongoing insurance marketing effort to reduce premiums, improve coverage, establish reasonable deductibles, maximize service provided by the insurance companies, and establish specific expectations of the county's insurers regarding claims handling by either their in-house staff or the outside council they select.
Any questions from council members? Ms. Smith and then Mr. Haas.
In D4, can you define, more specifically define the county? Who would that be?
Who would? Here.
Would that be management? Would that be council?
Well, in the past, when we represented the county, there were attorneys that the county had been using. And so whoever those are, and if the county wants to continue to use those, then we would use those.
Who, who, who are you saying would decide it though? The council, the administration?
The administration.
The administration?
Yeah.
The administration.
And then can you expand upon D5 as well?
I'm sorry?
Can you expand upon D5?
So what has happened in the past is that certain claims, so like, for instance, you have a policy with $100,000 deductible. And so a lot of those claims are handled by the county solicitor's office. And so the insurance company says, fine, because you're paying the first $100,000 anyway, so we will let you handle those claims. Normally, insurance company, when you have a claim, they say, we assign counsel. But you can't do that with the county because of a variety of reasons. But so, so the, the county solicitors, I know, actually, my question would be, is the county solicitor's office still doing that? That was five years ago. So I don't know if that's still happening. But if it is, then those kinds will be handled by them. And then what we do is we keep a spreadsheet, which we did in the past. We kept a spreadsheet and we monitored the claims to see what the amounts were. And then as it started to approach going over the deductible, then we would alert the insurance company that they're going to have to start paying excess of that amount. That's how that would work.
Thank you. And welcome, by the way. Sorry. But thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Colley, Ms. Dempsey, welcome back to Wilkes-Barre. Good to see you both.
Yes.
And I really hope you get this contract. I'm going to support you 100% right from the get-go. I see here in the notes that the interviewing team said three out of four committee members ranked you as, as number one. And that's duly noted. I was one of those people back here in 217 when, you also had the majority of support, but you lost the contract because of political purposes. All right. There was a political vote. It's very disconcerting to me because you pulled Luzerne County for the council members who weren't here. We had a real jam with the cyber issue here. And Brown and Brown, if you look at the, at the notes there, you can even, I'd like to hear that again because you did a tremendous service. And then the following year, when we went with another firm, our premium skyrocketed up a million dollars. It was just like that. It was a tremendous increase. So I hope the majority votes for you. And I don't know if you could speak to that, that cyber threat, if you can revisit that.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember some of the specifics, but as I recall, there was a very large claim in, in the, I think it was like 480 or 500,000. And, and I believe, if I recall correctly, that that was with the lower deductible. And so, I don't know if you can speak to that.
I don't.
I know you made yourself.
I can certainly, but I don't.
Yeah. And so, meaning that had you had the higher deductible, it would have been a much bigger hit to the county. But because we had worked to lower that deductible because we thought it was unreasonable. So, so that itself saved the county. I don't know, what was it? The difference was $140,000. So yes, that was pretty significant. So we, we felt pretty good about that, actually.
And, and I like the fact that you have a bigger reach and you're able to negotiate better. You have, you're coming from a position of strength. So like I said, welcome again. Best wishes. Thanks for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes. If you could just expand a little bit upon the risk management training. What kind of training services do you provide?
So do we provide that in the packet? The full, we have provided a full proposal to the county. And we have two certified risk managers, both that have multiple designations for safety type of issues, can provide the training, et cetera. So the training consists of, and this is what we've done in the past. In the past, what we did was we, we had in-person training. So we would come, we did defensive driving, we did-
Public officials liability.
Public official liability for issues like harassment. And so we did it, we did it during a day in, on, in different time slots so that everybody could participate. We did that for defensive driving and we did that for public visual training for sexual harassment and other types of harassment. The other thing we offer is monthly webinars. So we have free webinars to a month. They range in topics. Again, it was provided in the packet. But, you know, anything from safety committee certification to being a manager, work with workers' comp issues, abuse prevention, defensive driving, things of that nature. So we do a combination of webinars and in-person training. And then the third thing that we do, which we also did in the past, was inspections of facilities. The jail at all the major locations, like dislocations. And so one of the risk managers goes through, identifies potential hazards that could cause a claim and makes recommendations. And you'd much rather have a representative from your broker find problems than the insurance company. So we try to find the problems before the insurance company does because they have a different take. We're, we're here to support. They're kind of, we're a little more on the critical side. So, and so the same people that have worked on the account are available to work on the account going forward.
Yeah. The reason I ask that is because I know a lot of different circumstances. You know, sometimes in-person training goes a lot further than, you know, just watching a webinar or watching something online, signing policies. I know in my job, you know, we do have in-person training for certain, certain circumstances like that. So that's why I ask. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for council members? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Berch?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Joy, Mr. Joyce is here with Risk Strategies.
Good evening. My name is Bill Joyce and I'm an insurance broker with Risk Strategies. I want to thank council for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And we appreciate, and I would, and I would like to say, we appreciate having the chance to present the county with a proposal to be its insurance broker. I'd like to begin with a quick background on Risk Strategies. Risk Strategies is a nationwide insurance brokerage that was founded in 1997. Currently, Risk Strategies serves over 250,000 clients across the country with a team of 5,000 employees. We have several local offices here in northeastern Pennsylvania with two offices right in here in Luzerne County. Our agency has worked with the county on its insurance program in the past. We've worked together as recently as three years ago. We are familiar with the policies that the county carries and the exposures that it has. We believe that experience is exceptionally valuable and would eliminate any potential learning curve or adjustment period that might typically go along with the decision to change your insurance broker. Many things at our office are the same since we last worked together, but there have been a few changes. I'd like to highlight the material changes that I think are relevant to the work that we would do together. First, we've expanded our loss control services. We still have our local team based out of our office here in Pittston. But we have also, we've gained access to 120 loss control professionals within Risk Strategies. In addition to having access to these, these professionals, Risk Strategies offers clients access to its proprietary learning management system. It also offers access to a third-party learning management system. These systems can be utilized by the county to deliver on-demand, online training to employees on a wide range of topics and subject matter. The next item of note, we have a dedicated claims department. Through this department, the county would receive its own claims manager, who would report claims on behalf of the county and manage each claim to ensure every incident was handled seamlessly and efficiently from beginning to end. Our claims department also has a claims, a team of claims specialists within it. These, these folks, this team monitors the progress and ultimately the outcome of claims. And if necessary, they review policy language if we receive an adverse or an incorrect coverage determination from the carrier. This team will work to ensure that applicable coverage is applied and every claim situation is resolved appropriately. Finally, we have specialty teams or practices set up within Risk Strategies that the county can access. As it relates to the county's insurance program and its exposures, we have a management liability team, a cyber liability team that will serve as additional resources if there are any questions or concerns pertaining to either area of coverage. These teams will also be active participants for any policy review or examination that's done. And we would also lean into their expertise and knowledge when marketing these lines of coverage, all to the benefit of the county. To conclude, we believe that we are the right choice to serve as the, as the county's insurance broker. Ensuring governmental entities is something we have done at our office for decades. We believe that we are experts in the space and currently work with dozens of municipalities across northeastern Pennsylvania. We understand these types of accounts. We're familiar with the pain points that they face and we know the coverages that are essential to them. Our experience allows us to connect industry knowledge with robust loss control and claims management services to provide a comprehensive solution for our clients' insurance needs. We are confident, and we are confident that we would do just that for the county. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has at this time.
Any questions? Mr. Wulovich and then, and then Mr. Thornton.
Yeah. Again, about risk management. What kind of training programs do you guys offer?
So we can do in-person training and we can do online training, as I mentioned, as far as the scope of services that are offered. As far as the scope of services that are offered, we have management liability training, sexual harassment and public officials training, workplace violence, violence and active assailant training, defense or driver training, just to name a few.
Okay, so do you have on-hand, like trainers that go to these programs and do the in-person training?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Joyce, and any other party. Thank you, guys. So, one concern here was cybersecurity. Can you speak to that a little bit about training or ensuring that risk? Is that something you're comfortable with Risk Strategies? Because I know Mr. Haas raised that issue a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
So how, how do you feel about that?
I feel very confident in what we can provide to the county. As I mentioned, we have a dedicated, full-blown cyber liability team within our company. They would work with the county to evaluate current policies and procedures that are in place, identify any weak spots that might exist within a system. If there's any need for training on the backend or system, recommendations as far as upgrades go, they can do things of that nature. So with that specialty, there's a lot of ability to do front-end work that works to mitigate the possibility of any claim transpiring in the future.
So a couple of big issues in the county are sexual harassment, training, and also cybersecurity. So you're confident in both of those areas?
Absolutely.
And the last thing is, in years past, I know Joyce Insurance worked with the county for insurance coverages. One concern of years past, for some councilmen that were here in the years past, was that you were basically Joyce Insurance, and that was it. Can you speak a little bit about since then, what your partnership is with the national firm Risk Strategies and what, what that would bring to the table?
Sure. So in December of 2021, the Joyce Insurance Companies became part of Risk Strategies. As I mentioned, Risk Strategies is a national brokerage, insurance brokerage with over 5,000 employees. So it's, it's brought a lot of scale to the table for us. We've gained a lot of market accessibility that perhaps we may not have had previously. And it's brought a lot of specialty resources to the table as well. As I mentioned, we have the management liability team, our cyber liability team, but those are just two examples of the specialists that we have on our staff. We have 120 loss control specialists. We have a casualty specialty team. So it, it brought a lot of things to us that we otherwise couldn't-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Anybody else? Any other council members have questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Sparrow, do you have anything else?
Does anybody else have questions after you've heard both presentations?
Does anybody have anything from Ms. Sparrow? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Next up, we have discussion regarding the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzern County for the MHDS grant.
Tara Fox.
Hi, thank you. We received a $730,000 grant, dollar grant from the Department of Justice's Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Program. That'll be paid over the course of four years. For the purposes of this meeting, we are asking to amend our 2024 budget by only 40,000, as that's what we anticipate spending this year. The grant wasn't effective until August, or October 1st. We have to RFP for the services, therefore we anticipate only spending 40,000 this, over the course of the next two and a half months. This, this program will pay strictly for services, drug and alcohol, and mental health co-occurring services to juveniles in our juvenile wellness core program. And these are among some of the most difficult-to-serve population, so this will be 40,000 toward direct care.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Nice and easy, thank you.
Nice and easy.
Good job getting the grant.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution authorizing county manager to execute a renewal contract with Thomson Reuters for Westlaw Legal Research Software.
Is there a lawyer in the house? We have a lot of lawyers in the house today. Our public defender, Joe Jaeger.
I know some lawyer jokes, but I, I'll hold them till later.
I probably heard them all.
So do we.
Probably heard them all. Good evening. Good night, hopefully. Thomson Reuters is our, basically, Westlaw legal research aspect of our office. The district attorneys have the Westlaw. We've met with representatives from the organization. We have three contracts that we presented. One is three-year contract, and the other two are five-year contracts. The reason we like to enter into the long-term contracts is there's a savings. The increase is 5% and 4% as opposed to 8 or 9%. We've had this as long as, forever in our office, as I know the DA's have had it. The Office of Law has reviewed it regarding approval of these contracts, and we're asking council to approve the same.
Any questions from council? Ms. Smith?
I know the county has had Westlaw forever, but have we looked into Lexus? I believe Lexus is a little cheaper.
We believe this is cheaper. They, we're getting actually more for the buck than we have in the past. Our programs are, have increased, and a very little difference of cost from, from the last contract set that we had. And everyone in the office is familiar with Westlaw. They're comfortable with the Westlaw, and we use it for our research, our briefs, our memorandums, motions. So I don't want to have the office reinvent the wheel when everyone's familiar and comfortable with the Westlaw.
I understand that. I'm just was wondering about the costs, because I too prefer Westlaw.
Yeah.
And I'll put that on the record.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from council members? All right, thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you.
All right, moving on into the budget work session. Here we go. General Government, yeah.
It's the main event.
It's the main event.
And there they go.
Is it, is there a speaker if we sit there, like, that we can use? Or do you want us to sit there?
If you want to take the mic off and hold it, you can, no? Sorry.
It's all right.
You want Jimmy to get up and hold it for you?
Oh, do you, do you want, uh-
No, it's fine.
Ms. Lauren said she could get a stand for the mic if you want to sit at the table.
It doesn't matter, it's fine.
Okay.
I mean, do you care? Do you guys care? I don't care.
Okay, sorry.
We'll just-
Let's have the budget book on the ground.
Okay, so I'll do general government, and then we'll let the DA go, and then we'll do the rest. I just want to make a few comments and just-
Do you want that?
Do you guys want to sit there? What do you want to do?
No.
That's all right.
Okay.
We'll be okay, thank you.
Sorry, Sharon.
That's okay. In the past, the merit increases were shown on a separate line for non-rep. And this year in the budget, we have them budgeted within the salary item. When we wrote the management letter, the manager's letter when she introduced the budget, we gave you the amount of that increase. So in the past, with it being shown on one line, it was really just, you know, we would show it on one line for county council, but then we had to go ahead and move it all back again, because that's not how anyone gets paid. So it was really an exercise, it caused a whole lot of work and with a whole lot, without a whole lot of benefit, because we're giving you the number that's already in the, in the letter, as I said. So hopefully that makes sense to everyone. So when everyone talks about their variances, everyone would have that variance, obviously. It'd be 100%, right? Because all of that, that increase now is shown in the salary line item, like I said. So some people will just ignore that, just so you know that it's there. The other change that we made this year for everyone is that the advertising costs for all of our open positions are now budgeted within human resources. So what they did in the past is, you know, all the ads go through HR, HR handles everything, and then we would go ahead and bill them out to general fund departments, which again, no benefit, right? It's all general fund. So HR is handling all of that advertising now, so you'll see it out of the departments and all in the HR budget. As we move through the presentations, or as more information becomes available, such as like some of the things you heard tonight where grants will be given, right? Like throughout the year, and then we have to sit here and do these budget amendments. So if there are any grants, and there are a few, this is, they're all, it's all good stuff, but there are a few grants that we know people will be receiving, and we receive that information after we did the budget. So what we'll do is after everyone presents, like, it won't be in the numbers that you have, obviously, but everyone can bring that up, and then once everyone goes through, I'll give you a summary of what that is, okay? So like, say for example, someone got a $50,000 grant, right? We're going to increase revenue, we're going to increase expenses. So at the end, I'll give you a summary so that you can see all, all together exactly any changes that we would propose, you know, we're making to what we've already submitted. And in addition, if there are any like small errors or anything like that, we'll, we'll give you that too. So everything is included, and that the budget that you end up passing is, as of that day, the most accurate and correct budget, you know, we can give you. I mean, obviously, every budget, right? The day after you pass it is just that, right? Like, a million things changed. But we want to do it as, we want to put as much as we possibly can in there to avoid having people come in, you know, do these budget amendments in front of council. So the other thing we did is we really looked at, you know, I mean, I'm relatively new, right? It's some, a year in this position. So like, I'm a, I'm a tell-me-why person, not just do it because we've always done it. So I've challenged a lot of people, tell me why we've done this? Tell me why you only pay so much for your health insurance? Or tell me why we don't charge you for your total retirement? So, you know, although people may be frustrated with those questions, I think that, you know, overall, it's helped us, you know, because this year was obviously very challenging, right? To try to do a 0% tax increase again. But some of the things that we found was, you know, just talking about retirement. We have 911, and we have domestic relations. Forever, we've charged them the same amount for retirement. I'm like, why? Tell me why? You don't pay your total retirement. Nobody knew why. So I'm like, okay, well, let's look into that. Like, go to, go to Pima, go to whoever you need to go to and find out why. Like, can you pay it? And we found, in most cases, domestic relations is now going to pay 100% of their retirement because they can. So, like, okay, we're going to have to pay it. 911, you know, much bigger number. So we're going to get them there. But, you know, they're, again, paying more of their retirement. So that's just one example of how sometimes just asking why, you know, helps. And we, and we could all, you know, work together to make things better. The other major issue we have is our health insurance, right? So last year, we joined the consortium. We all know that with being self-insured, it's like throwing a dart at the wall, right? I mean, our health insurance costs are all over the place. And unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of data to see what that's going to look like. We have like six months of data, quite honestly. So we're doing the best we can to, again, give you the best possible estimate we can for that number. But just as an example, I can tell you, within one month, our fund balance in health insurance swapped by like a million dollars. It's a huge variance, right? So, you know, I think the one thing we want to work towards, and we can't do it this year, but one thing that I think we really need to work towards is having a health insurance reserve, just because we're self-insured. And we see those fluctuations, and we have to be able to ride that out. So with that being said, those are comments that you'll see everybody, you know, will affect everyone, like everyone's budget presentation that's, that's here. So I wanted to bring those to your attention first. The first division that I'm responsible for presenting is the general government division. So included in the general government division are some pretty big, pretty big numbers. We have healthcare, retirement, the vacancy factor, which is everyone, I'm sure remembers, was just introduced last year for the very first time in balancing the budget. We also have postage in there for our magistrate's offices and managed print. So you, you were given a division sheet, and this is going to be the same for everyone. You're given a division sheet, and then behind that, all of the departments that are within that division. So I'm going to talk to you from a division standpoint, but you could look at every single department, and then all those departments would basically add up to what I'm telling you in the division. So again, looking at general government, the 2024 adopted revenue budget was $9,285,000. The proposed revenue for 2025 is $7,719,000. The adopted expenses for the 2024 budget were $33,083,014,000, and proposed expenses for '25 are $34,475,647,000. And again, we'll talk about some things that changed. And in a lot of cases, we also made sure we were budgeting things in the right place. So you would have also seen last year where things like interest income were budgeted in several different places with absolutely no reason as to why. We would budget them in several different places, right? It's easier to track it, and probably easier for all of you to see if it's shown in one place. So that's what we did. Okay, so from a revenue standpoint, the healthcare reimbursement for agencies changed by 31% or $1.8 million, and that's reflective of the actual reimbursements that we're receiving. So what that number represents is the health insurance that we're billing to the human service agencies and any department that's not in the general fund. So the airport, for example, we bill for the health insurance, and any other department that, again, is not part of general fund. The healthcare reimbursement employees, you'll see, has gone up 8% or $259,000,000. And that's a change to reflect the increase in our COBRA rates. So we're working with HR to make sure that, you know, they're billing out the correct COBRA rates and that we're getting as much as we can from those employees that, you know, are no longer with us but still want to take advantage of the health insurance. From an expense standpoint, the vacancy factor is another major change. Last year, in our adopted budget, we had a vacancy factor of $520,000. If I look at what that looks like in actual numbers, as of today, it's more like $3.2 million. So that's great, right? We're, we budget it 520,000. So what we did is we conservatively budgeted $1.5 million. We expect that to really be, like I said, 3.2, we're budgeting 1.5. The benefits health insurance has gone up by $3 million or 14%. Now, that number is based on Benetton's renewal, renewal rates that they're going to have us pay to fund, to fund our fund because we're self-insured. So what happens is they give us a rate, and every month, we have to pay that rate based on either single coverage or family coverage. And that money goes into a fund. And then all of the actual expenses, all the actual claims for people going to the doctor or hospital, whatever, utilizing the services, are paid out of that fund. So what happens is, you know, if you have less claims, we end up with a surplus, right? We have more claims, we end up with a, with a deficit. So it's their actuary's estimate on what they're going to make us pay. So, so that's what that number represents. And again, we're throwing a dart at the wall, because at the end of the year, if we don't have enough money in there, we're on the hook to pay it. If we have too much money in there, we can use it to offset the claims. So, so it all depends. Benefits retirement has gone down by 7% or $860,000, and that's because we're now billing, like I said, domestic relations for 100% of their retirement and more for 911. Some of the other expenses are, are smaller. Managed print services has gone up by 10% just based on running rate. The government study commission budget, when you approved the amendment today, that amendment was approved because we had to change the line items. So the $75,000 that you allocated initially, still what their budget is for '24. The budget request for the government study fund for '25, however, is $185,000. So that's 147% increase, or $110,000. And again, you'll see the, the line items are there as far as what they wanted to use the money for. There are some office supplies and repairs and maintenance that we reduced because the money hasn't been spent. We haven't spent any money there this year for county councils, so that was reduced. And then from a county manager's standpoint, we have a slight increase in wages non-represented for grant writer salary increase, some office supply increases. The advertising, is advertising for commission meetings and RFPs. Telephone internet has gone up because we're still sharing, we're still sharing space with the county manager. So like the telephone, you'll see between budget and finance and county manager is a little skewed, will be lower there, higher here. And then meetings, conferences, and trainings are due to the CCAP meetings and leadership trainings. So that is the proposed budget and the explanation of the expenses for, again, the general government division. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Any questions? Mr. Haas?
Some comments. Ms. Ms. Rose, I'm so impressed. Thank you so much for what you do. I talked to Ramil earlier, just to, just including the vacancy factor, because first manager was a whiz-bang at balancing the budget on open positions. So thank you for giving us like a realistic perspective of what, what we really have. So I personally appreciate that. You talk about the whys, that's like zero-based budget, we talked about many years ago, too. So I thank you for that, and same as money there. For, let me see here, I think the only question, the question I really have is, so we're self-insured now, what, what time of year was the, was the premium withdrawn from the account? the account? Do you remember?
Well, we paid it every month. So every month, we put the premium in, you know, again, it's obvious on what the actuary is determining the premium to be.
Right.
So, um, so every month, we pay that either based on, like I said, single or family coverage and then every month, we pay the claims.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, I could tell you, we were in, when we did the budget, we were at a million dollar surplus. We thought life was good and then the next month, it was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar surplus.
No, no.
So it fluctuates a lot. That's a lot.
Exactly, and I appreciate that. When we were, when we were insured by, by another entity, did, did we pay that premium at the beginning of the, of the year, at the end?
Same.
Did we pay that installment? It was just monthly?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we realized savings with that as well? So it's the same there?
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Anybody else? All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna let the DA do theirs and then I'll hop back up here.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, this will be the shortest budget presentation I've ever made. Anybody that wants me to talk longer after I'm done, just let me know. Uh, the short version of a long story is, number one, I have to especially thank my fiscal clerk, Ebenezer Sherry Middleton, um, who watches every single penny, tries to save us money at every turn, uh, controls the expenses and most, probably most importantly for you all, uh, did all the explanations in the notes of the, of our budget that pretty much explains line by line, every, every reason everything changed. Uh, the sword of Damocles hovering, holding, uh, hanging over our head this year is the detective's contract is up. Um, you probably know this, if you're in touch with any municipality in Luzerne County, the cost of policing has, um, exponentially increased because we're having difficulty getting police. Um, so the, the cost of starting patrolmen, the starting salary is, I did a countywide survey, it's around sixty-five thousand dollars. So I expect the starting salary of detectives to increase, uh, but we'll deal with that as it comes along. I'm in regular contact with Scott Gartley and the detectives' union to try to minimize the damage that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna see there. I'd like to commend manager Crocambeau and budget and finance because they held the line and were able to, uh, satisfy what we needed for our budget without actually raising taxes. That was no small task and I was not easy to get along with. Um, but, uh, everybody knows our, our big problem is retention. Retention is usually associated with salaries. So I think we did a good job in making salaries reasonable without going overboard and hopefully, uh, it starts to cure our retention and hiring problem. Uh, we just recently hired three ADAs, which I thought was great and then found out we're losing two. So what are we gonna do? Obviously, we're not a profit generating department, so our, our revenue line will never match our expense line. Uh, however, we have, uh, gotten, I think you probably remember some of you from last year, uh, our central booking fee, uh, has started to be collected. We got eighty-two thousand dollars, which we'll, you'll see in the notes there. Uh, the central booking center is not up and running. Uh, we're coordinating that with a new central court location, so, uh, that's still in flux. However, the fees are being collected. As you know, we were awarded opioid settlement funds. I sit on that committee. Uh, I will try to ensure that the funds that are, to which the DA is entitled will be utilized appropriately. I'm working very closely with manager Crocambeau to get some waivers because some of the, um, resources I would like to use the money on are not permitted in exhibit E of the settlement I think the one, you know, elephant in the room every year seems to be about the capital case line item. Uh, I could tell you, the capital case line item is not just used when we have trials that are capital offenses. It's used in the investigation of potential capital crimes. Uh, ongoing, we have two potentially capital cases involving, uh, one involves at least five defendants. I could tell you that in, in the expenses for that investigation, uh, we had to use a specialized DNA laboratory to do some certain testing. The bill for that was thirty-two thousand dollars. So, uh, the capital expense line item goes to pay for things like that. Um, I would ask that that not be reduced. That seems to be something I have to come back and fight for every year. I hope everybody understands, unfortunately, uh, you can't mete out justice based on a checkbook, but like I said, we do our best to control, uh, whatever costs we possibly can control without doing harm to the justice system. My last big item to discuss was the airport. I think we already covered that. So unless anybody has any questions about that, I won't revisit it. Um, I want to thank all of you for the hard work that you guys are doing and not raising taxes on, uh, our residents and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the DA's budget.
Any questions from council members? All right.
Wow, that's a first. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Rozell, back to you.
Back to me, okay. Okay, so the next division that I'm going to talk about is budget and finance. So I mentioned that we're putting interest income all in one place at this point. So, um, actually, let me just talk to you about the, the adopted revenue for 2024 is a hundred and thirty-seven million seven thousand seven hundred. Our proposed revenue was a hundred and thirty-nine million twenty-seven thousand eight sixty-six. So slight increase. Um, the adopted expenses, three million three fifty-three four twenty-four was from the 2024 adopted budget and our proposed expenses are two million eight forty-one fifty. The num, the headcount position stayed exactly the same. Um, there are no changes there. Our interest income, as I said, um, we're going to put that all in one place. You'll see the reduction here, um, in both the investments and the P card. So that accounts for about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar decrease. Um, the assessors is part of general budget and finance or admin budget and finance. Um, with the common level ratio at a higher rate, we anticipate that we'll have some more appeals, so that line item has increased by twenty percent or three thousand dollars. Thankfully, our PIN cert number has gone up by ten thousand, small percentage, one point four percent. So that's anytime anyone does anything as far as recording a deed, getting a mortgage, anything that's actually entered, um, there's a cert form. So that's how we get that revenue increase. In addition, on the revenue side, we have the, um, cleaning green application fee that has gone up by five hundred dollars based on our running rate. Um, you know, our kind of elephant in the room is our, uh, current year tax collection. So we can see that that's down by two point five million dollars or two percent. And, you know, we've talked about that before when we talked about what, um, what happened with, what could be happening with the hospital, um, you know, what has already happened. So that's, uh, decreasing our, our tax base. Payments in lieu of taxes, we were able to increase a little bit, a hundred thousand dollars based on our running rate. Our tax claim has done a great job in collecting our prior year taxes. We've been able to increase that by three percent or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we also increased our fees in the treasurer's office. We went from ten dollars to fifteen dollars for our tax certs and our duplicate bill fees. So that'll get us another fifteen thousand. Um, and then other income has gone down because our return payments have decreased. Our rent of building is based on our rental agreements that are actually in place. Uh, it's gone down two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the budgeted amount last year, but it's in line with the actual. And then, um, the big thing we need to discuss is how we balanced our budget with no tax increase. And the way we did that, um, at this point, is we've used three million dollars worth of ARPA interest. So you'll see that show up in the budget and finance line item as a transfer in. So we'd be transferring that from, um, fund one twenty-five, which we'll talk about later, which is the ARPA fund. And then the other thing, um, of a million dollars, we're saying that we will have, by the end of the year, we will have a reserve balance about, of about a million dollars and we want to carry that forward. So those two amounts together are what has helped us balance our budget. And our interest income, um, has gone up by half a million dollars because again, we moved it all there. So it's all in that one department now, in four one seven six. From an expense standpoint, um, we see a reduction in contractual services with the expenses for the New World Integration payroll costs. We had those expenses in '24, we will not have them in '25. The other stuff is kind of small, just some mileage reimbursement, um, advertising. We can see that our liability and casualty insurance has gone up about thirty-six hundred dollars or a hundred and six percent. And that's just based on higher, um, insurance renewal costs across the board. Telephone and internet, you'll see it's higher in that department because again, we're combined with the county manager. So we'll, you'll see the reduction here, it was higher on the county manager's side. Uh, everything else is pretty small. Contractual services in the assessor's office has gone down by sixteen thousand eight hundred and that's because of their, because of a third-party software that they're not going to be using in the future called ART, which is the assessor's retrieval tool. They tried it out in the field, didn't work, so they, um, you know, got rid of that to save some money. The, we really took a hard look at the wages elected officials, made sure that we were, um, budgeting exactly what the amount is. Gone, it's gone down by about twenty thousand dollars, which is really just getting the actual in there. It was estimated at three hundred thousand last year. You'll see that there's a, a budget item for, uh, retirement in the tax collector's office, which was a keying error. We'll remove that when I give you that summary sheet that I was telling you about. And I think from an expense standpoint, that's about it with the exception of parking. So we talked about parking last year when we, um, had to renew the contract. So parking has gone up. Um, we definitely look at the spaces that we have allocated to all of our divisions and, and in all of our buildings to make sure we minimize those. But we do have an increase of thirty percent or fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for parking. So those are the general, um, 100 funds that are included in budget and finance. And then we need to talk about the funds that are not 100 funds. So does anyone have any questions on the 100 funds before I move on to the next set of funds?
Mr. Haas?
Hey, Ms. Rozell, just going back to the, um, how we're balancing the budget with three million from ARPA interest.
Right.
I think we've talked about this before, but just to be very clear, so we, we don't have to program this money at any time. We could hold on to this for 20 years, right? And because it's just the interest account? Or does it have to be expended by a certain time?
Um, we're trying to get clarification on that because there are, um, we know that we can definitely, we don't have to have it expended by the end of '25, but I think that we're, we've asked, um, you know, Booth to confirm how long we can actually hold it. But, um, we believe at this point, at least till 2026, but...
Yeah, right now, it's, until 2026, although there are some, uh, grumblings that there would be an extension on that.
No, we're gonna, my line of thought, just to let everyone know, I'm just thinking, we can minimize the amount of money we're gonna take out of that fund, we could save that for next year, of course. So I think that's a good goal to have, but I think it's an appropriate use of the money. So thanks. Thank you both.
Anybody else?
Okay, now there are some other funds that are again, not general fund funds. So they're not part of the 100 fund, which means that the funds themselves have to balance. Um, the first one of those funds is the CARES Act Fund, so fund one twenty-five. Um, you were given those today. I think Sharon copied those, so they should be in the stuff that was copied. So that's, um, Department forty-one seventy-six, fund one twenty-five. So the way the CARES money works is that as we disperse the CARES money and it's given out to the, to the public, that's how it becomes a revenue for us. Okay? So it's deferred until we actually give it to someone and then we actually record the revenue. So in 2024, we had estimated that that would hap, you know, we'd have about eighty million dollars, eighty million seven fifty. In '25, we're estimating about fifty-two million because we're gonna pay a lot of that out before we get to the end of '24. '24 expenses, obviously, the, the expenses again, balance with the revenue. So same expenses as the revenue numbers I just talked about. We are earning a decent amount of interest income on that. We're budgeting interest income of two million dollars for 2025, which I think is a conservative number. Again, it all depends on how quickly the funds get paid out, right? As we pay out more funds, obviously, we'll earn less money, but we work every month to watch those interest rates and we'll move the money around, you know, so that we can make sure we maximize those. So that's fund one twenty-five. Then there is a fund one thirty-five, which was a Penguins DCED grant. Cause as we get grants, a lot of times, we have to segregate them into different funds. It's a requirement of getting the grant. So this Penguins grant was, it's over now, it's, it's done. It was expended in '24. But it was a tourism grant, we were just a pass through. There was a deck hockey, um, rink that was built at Cole Street, so that's completed and, and you won't see that, um, in the budget again in '25. Um, the next one is fund one forty, which is a DHS emergency rental assistance grant. And this one is, is kind of interesting because a lot of times, we don't know if we're getting this money. And this is an example of one that we don't know if anything could happen for next year. But as of now, we again, we're a pass through, the money is going to CEO. So we're not budgeting anything for '25 because as of today, we don't know that we're getting anything. Um, fund one forty-six was a DCED state facility closure grant. So that was a grant that again, we were just a pass through for. Um, they closed some facilities such as, uh, Whitehaven Center, I think there was a prison involved, a missed grant that we had for a few years. Um, so again, the money's expended and that grant is closed out also, so you won't see that in '25. The next one is our opioid settlement money. So that is fund, um, one forty-eight. And again, we're required to keep that separate. Um, attorney Sam Wengulchi did talk to you a little bit about, you know, the money that he's getting. So there is an opioid, um, committee that's obviously in place now. Um, you'll see our '24 adopted revenue number was five million dollars. At that point, it was an estimate, okay? Again, revenue has to equal expenses. It was an estimate of the money they thought they were going to get in. I actually think the number's a little bit less because the number that comes in, in December of '24 will actually be our '25 number. So we know that number, at least that they've given us that number. I guess it could change, there's a possibility they could change it, but as of now, that's what they've given us. So the proposed revenue and expenses for '25 are based on the schedule that we've received. Um, and again, we're maximizing our interest there too. So we now have a committee, you know, we will be awarding the money as, you know, people are requesting it, we'll review it and then get that money sent out. So all of that money now for 2025 is budgeted in contractual services because that's what we believe we're gonna do, right? For 2024, there was some management consulting that they had budgeted, but not '25. The next fund is fund one forty-nine, again, balances Broad Street Exchange. So the Broad Street Exchange is a building that, um, we sort of found, right? That we, that we own in Hazelton. There was a management company that was apparently running it and, um, basically kept all the money and, and paid all the bills and we weren't really like involved in the day-to-day operations. Well, we found that and we changed all that. So now we take the money, we earn the interest, but of course, along with that, we pay all the expenses, right? We pay all the expenses, we have to have somebody there managing the building. So, um, within our operations division, Jen Pokora has someone who has been managing that building for us. Um, we may actually get a building manager, but at this point, that's where we are. So we're budgeting for '25, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, that is the rental income that we will receive from that building. And then of course, you'll see all the expenses that go along with that, which are like the cleaning, contracted services, if we do hire, um, a manager. Um, we have to obviously have insurance, repairs and maintenance. There are some significant repairs that may need to be made to that building sometime in the near future. So, um, we've budgeted what we could there and then your normal electricity, gas or water, those kind of things. And finally, the last non-100 fund, um, is the hotel room rental tax fund, which is fund four fifty. Um, slight decrease from a revenue standpoint, just based on the running rate. So last year's adopted revenue, four point one million dollars, we're budgeting four million this year. Um, and that's it for the, uh, technically budget and finance divisions for any of the, the special funds that we have. Does anyone have any questions on the special funds?
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Rozell, the opioid, opioid settlement?
Yes.
Um, one forty-eight fund there. Will we be able to collect interest payments on that as well?
Yes, we are.
Is that some, so it's just like the ARPA?
Correct.
The funding will be used forever? Wonderful.
Less money, so we're, less interest, but yes, we are earning interest on that.
Sure, absolutely less. Maybe a little bit helps. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then there are just, oh, I'm sorry, you have another question for me?
Yeah, Ms. Rozell, um, did you by chance forget to pay the WVSA sewer fee this quarter?
No. I know, right?
Yeah.
It's bad. We're dying back there.
It's horrible.
And it's hot.
I don't know if it's just over there, but it's very bad back here.
We, yeah.
And it's warm in here.
Yeah.
Poor, yeah, poor Jen. We have been like, you know, telling her, aren't you responsible for this? Can you do something? We're, yeah, we're, blame Jen. It's all good.
Okay. Anybody else for questions? Ms. Rozell?
Okay, so my last piece of information that I need to relay to you are just kind of like the special division. So the first one is debt service. So the debt service division is 4721. You'll see that we have expenses, right? That's just, those are our debt service payments. So in 2024, our expenses were $26.7 million. In 2025, $26.3 million is what we have budgeted as of now. And that's because as of today, as we stand here, we did not budget for TRAM. However, we're discussing that, you know, we're think, well, we're thinking that it might make sense to do a small TRAM. Like, right, let's all remember, the TRAM is an insurance policy, right? It's an insurance policy based on our cash flow. So we're thinking that, you know, maybe a $6 million TRAM would make sense. If we do that, we'll of course increase the expenses and increase, you know, revenue too because we'll earn interest on the money that we're collecting. So that's something that we're still in discussion with and Ramilda will make that decision, right? Soon, depending on how, not on a Friday. We don't make major decisions on Fridays. So that's your debt service. And, you know, the rest is just our normal amortization schedule of the debt payments that we're always making. Then we have our intergovernmental appropriation, which stayed exactly the same at $8.4 million. And that's where you have, you know, all of your contributions to the Loser and Controivation Society, LCC, Penn State, the library, LCTA, Wilks, all of those. Okay, so we kept that exactly the same. The County Reserve Fund is the last piece of information that you have. And that is again, just as it stands today, okay? So last year, we adopted the budget with a $401,000 reserve. Right now, as again, as we talk today, it's at $239,691. That's what we have in there when we balance the budget. But that will change because again, as we, you know, get some additional grants or have to make some changes, you know, there may be some change to that. And that's again, what we're estimating for 2025. I'm still saying at the end of '24, we should sit with about $1 million in the reserve that we're looking to carry over so that again, we can use that to balance the budget. Does anyone have any questions on those funds or divisions technically?
On the TRAM, just thinking here out of the box, is it possible to earn more interest on the TRAM than what we're paying on the note? And if it is, maybe we should borrow like 100 billion.
We, well, technically, technically, yes, it is absolutely possible and it actually has happened. However, in order to get a TRAM, you need to be able to show that your cash flow, that you're in need of the TRAM. You can't just say, I want a TRAM just because I want a TRAM. So you have to be able to show that your cash flows dictate the fact that you would need a TRAM. Now, could we make that, could it look like we need a TRAM? I mean, it could. Because again, our cash flows will significantly decrease when we get to December, January and part of February, right? Those are the toughest months for us because we don't have any revenue coming in for the most part. So could we get it? Yes, but we can't, no, we can't like, you know, justify from a cash flow standpoint that we need a $10 million TRAM and say, no, wait, give us 20 because we can get a good interest rate. That one.
Well, no, we wouldn't say that.
Well, yeah, so have we in the past, in certain months, made more money than it cost us? Yes, we have.
Yeah, that would be nice.
That would be nice, yes. But we're maximizing our interest in every way that we can. We're watching all of the accounts. We're using Pliget as much as we can to make sure we get the highest interest rate. So regardless of what we decide to do with the TRAM, we'll make sure the money is moved around so that we are earning the most interest we can.
Any other questions? All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we will have Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone. Ooh, it does smell here. Wow.
Am I the last one? Am I standing between everyone? Okay.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, for your report. Have a good night.
We're done. Okay, so the Administrative Services Division. You could see that our adopted revenue for '24 was $826,840. You have your paper, Mr. Lombardo? Okay. Proposed revenue was $1,119,573. 2024 adopted expenses were $8,24,576. And then finally, 2025 proposed expenses are $8,399,41. You could see in our position counts that we have 39 and a half employees that are nonrepresented. We have 19 who are represented. We have an, we had an increase of one position in our division and that was a shared position between our HR and the courts. So we have a person who reports to our HR but gets paid through the court system. The court system reimburses us. So that's the only change that we've had. Looking further down on this worksheet, we could see that our HR expenses, HR expenses reimbursement last year was $330,000 and this year it's $281,865. You can see that that's a 14.58% change and that is based on our 2024 running rate. So that is based on, excuse me, what is proposed, projected through the end of this year. Our HAVA Vote, Help America Vote Grant, which is in elections, was $25,000 in 2024. And we projected before we were finished, or we were projected before tonight that it would be $250,000, which is a 99% decrease. And that was strictly because we didn't know that the budget, that there would be any grant coming in this year. That has changed and I'm sure that we'll be summarizing that for you. So we did get a better grant than $250,000. Our elections interest income in 2024 was projected to be $1,500 and now it's projected to be $5,000, which is a nice increase of 233.33%. And that again, is based on the 2024 running rate. Our elections expense reimbursement was proposed, or adopted rather, for 2024 at $65,000. And for this year, we are looking at $212,000, which is a 226% increase. And that is because there are eligible expenses that we can charge to the Election Integrity Grant. So we're just shifting some of the funds and we're gonna be taking it out of that grant. And that grant, of course, is provided to us by the feds, passed through the state. So that doesn't, that does not come out of the general fund. We move on to GIS and mapping. And we see that there's a slight decrease of $1,000 from $5,000 to $4,000 in the sale of the maps. And that's because we now have an electronic portal and people can go and take a look at the information that they want online. So there's no fee to them for that. We do still sell maps online and we're projecting a $500 increase, which is just 10% from $5,000 to $5,500.
Mr. Rose, could I just jump in there?
Yes.
Not to rain on your parade there.
You know, I'm moving here.
No, I know.
Everybody wants to kill me.
No, I know. I just think in the interest of time, because we have all of these explanations that you're reading.
You do, yes.
We have them all in front of us.
Okay.
So maybe just hit on the more, the larger amounts or the major changes and the smaller ones. You know, if someone has a question at the end, they can ask about the smaller ones.
That works. Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
In the interest of time. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, so some of the larger changes are the mapping expense reimbursements from $32,500 to $45,000. And that is because our mapping, our GIS mapping department is going to be providing services to other departments. And those departments are gonna be reimbursing GIS mapping. We move on to information technology, IT. And we're looking, we had adopted revenue for this year of $200,000, but we're looking at a 52.5% increase to $305,000. And that's based upon updated employee account, employee counts. As you could see here, software and licensing changes. And of course, the ever-present increases in everything. Moving down to small games of chance, that changed. For them, it's a big increase. It's $7,000. And that's just because of the increases, or I'm sorry, of increased amount of licenses that are being sold. And that's, you know, for like parish bazaars and fireman's picnic, et cetera.
Take the rest of those on that page are pretty explanatory. You know, the small ones on that page.
Move me along, Mr. Thornton. Thank you. So if you flip to the next page, you see insurance and benefits expense reimbursement, and that's a huge change. And that change is because the renewal rates have truly increased terribly this year. So there's really nothing we could do about that at this point. And that's why that has increased 181%. So moving along, small increase in HR wages. Small decrease in elections material supplies. And then the Elections Bureau was able to take a look at some of the accounts and change where the funding has come from. So some of that funding is going to be coming from the Election Integrity Grant because we're only allowed to spend those funds for certain things and we were able to move them around. So that's a help to the county budget. Okay, Mr. Thornton, I'm down to information technology, other contractual services. Is that a good place to go?
Is that the next page?
Yes. Three blocks from the bottom.
Getting late, you gotta tell me to turn the page.
Turn the page. So the change there is just over 10% change, but it's well over $10,000. And that's because some of the funds were reallocated to different accounts because of increased software licenses. You know, there was a huge increase in our Microsoft license. And of course, we depend upon Microsoft for much of what we do. Those are the big increases, I believe. Yes, sir. That's a big increase.
Yep.
So that is again, because of the, the cost increases from the providers.
Any other, go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Rose.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the Election Integrity Grant 10 times in here. Enlighten me, how much did we get in the Election Integrity Grant?
1.1 million this year.
What do we have left? Any ideas?
We're, I don't, I can't tell you the balance right now, but I know that we still have money.
A few bucks left.
Yes.
If we don't spend it, what happens?
We keep it.
We keep it.
We'll spend it because we get the payment in September. So we use it for the general election and then we have to use it for the primary in 2025.
And of course, the current election is very expensive.
Mr. Lescavage?
Jim, I don't want you to think I wasn't paying attention, so I want to congratulate you on your side hustle. I know you're a deacon and I noticed here that you've increased 50% on selling the bingo licenses.
Whoa, yes. It's called self-preservation, Mr. Lescavage. Any other questions? I shouldn't be asking that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Any other, that's, that's okay. No worries. Any other questions, council members, on this part? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We can go into the other non-one hundred funds if you'd like. Mr. Thornton, are you up to that?
If everybody else is, yeah.
This is much faster.
Yeah, I would say that's fine.
Okay, so if we look at, again, the Bureau of Elections, Election Integrity Grant, that balances out. Last year, we got 100, or we got $1,040,000. And of course, had to spend $1,040, $1,040,000. And this year, $1,036,000. And we will spend all of that, every last bit of it. Moving along to Licensing's 440A Fund. Licensing receives, when they sell licenses like dog licenses, the funds are passed right through to the state because it's actually the state's dog license and not our county's. Okay. Workman's Comp, the 300. You can see that one's really difficult. It's a million, a million, a million and a million. Insurance and benefits has changed dramatically too. And that was $50,000 in '24 and it's $140,000 this year for the revenue. And then the expenses are $3.2 million and $3.4 million. And a lot of that's driven, any of the cost increases are driven by our insurance providers. And that's what I have.
Anything, any other questions from council members? Is there a problem with the speakers? I think there is. Right, that might be it. All right. Any questions from council members on anything?
The speaker shut off at 9:15 PM.
Yeah. All right, if there's no other questions, thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Appreciate it. All right, we'll now move into public comment. We have Mr. Griffith.
Okay, so the first issue is, I voted no on the agreement for the LEO in 2021 for just this very reason. That everybody gives us these government mandates and they promise us the sky. And here we are, 2024 with no money. Much like we hit everything else in this county. So in 2021, the agreement the council was given, they said, when the money stops, the agreement stops. I'm not in favor of getting rid of law enforcement, but when these politicians are on the radio and on TV saying they support law enforcement, then let's see the money, Mr. Cartwright. Let's see the money, Mr. Casey. They're on the radio, they're on the TV saying, I support law enforcement. Where's the money to back it up? The airports should be funding that. We should not be funding that. Either the airport should do it or somebody else should do it, but the county should not. They had it before. Avoca Borough didn't bail. Avoca Borough made an agreement. They were required to do that. They have no other choice. If they get called by the airport, they have to respond. In 2021, Steve Urban and I voted against that, that resolution was exactly why. Because the money was gonna stop and we weren't gonna have it anymore. And we increased the LEO officer's salary from $18,400 to $20,000. That's great for somebody who has no money to pay us. Why are we increasing their salaries? Take a look at that in the budget. The interest rate discussion was very appropriate. I thought that was really good. Seems how Mr. Thornton was the one that brought up interest. We never talked about interest in this county, ever, ever. We didn't even know what Pliget was. We thought Pliget was like plonkow on the Wheel of Fortune game or whatever it was. Now we're using Pliget, we're using the bank interest, all of this stuff. Thank you, Mr. Thornton, for bringing it up. It was great. Now we're getting a couple million dollars a year. So that's good. And, and the biggest issue I have with the LEO is when that agreement stopped, the council should have been told. That's what I told the airport and that's what I told the manager and that's what I'm telling this council. You have a contract that you drafted as this council and that contract stopped, this council should have been told that that contract stopped and the funding has stopped. You guys didn't even know the funding stopped until I told you. That's not right. This council should have been told that. That funding stopped in March and council should have been told that in March by the airport, not by the manager, by the airport. And that didn't happen. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Raybo?
I just wanted to come up here, two fact checks real quick. One is the state attorney general when said about the following the drop, following the law on the drop boxes. Mr. Chair, there is no law with regards to drop boxes. Once again, the ballot drop box directive by the State Supreme Court was given in September of 2020 in the State Supreme Court during the COVID outbreak. It was presented by then, I thank Councilman Perry for reminding me, my buddy Kathy Buckvar for putting that initiative through because the health and safety of the voter was at risk because the then-Governor Tom Wolf put the emergency declaration in place. And then it was affirmed by the Middle District Court of Pennsylvania in November of 2021. So therefore, it's a directive. And by the way, I got something here from a conference of state legislators who did a thorough assessment of all the drop box laws throughout the country. You wanna know what it says? Here's what it says. Six states are not explicit in statute but have some jurisdictions that use drop boxes. Idaho, Kansas, North Dakota, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin and Wyoming. So therefore, there's nothing in the election law as provided by what Ms. Joan Urban Smith said about the attorney general's assessment on having ballot drop boxes because there's criminal charges. I'd like to see where the sentencing guidelines are on that violation. And also, another fact check was September, or the 2021 ordinance that was introduced by then-Councilman Urban. That was for funding the delivery of the ballot drop boxes. It had nothing to do with the, what Chair Williams That was for funding the delivery of the ballot drop boxes. It had nothing to do with the, what Chair Williams suggested. So that's another incorrect statement there. And also, one last thing about the, what the district attorney said about the funding, the security, I made kind of two suggestions. One is Penn dot multimodal could be used for security because I know Philadelphia uses some of that money for the SEPTA for their transportation use. And also, federal DOT, along with the Department of Justice, has a program for, I think they use it for the air marshals on planes, so that might be another thing to explore. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.